All right, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting. We're glad to see everyone come out tonight. I do want to welcome you here. We are doing a couple things tonight. We actually have just started live streaming the meeting, so I want to make everybody aware that the meeting tonight will be live streamed on YouTube, and that is happening now. I know we have limited seating, so I want to thank the folks that are standing up in the back. And I also want to welcome our wonderful Manio Elementary School choir here, so if you would give them a round of applause.[96.36][96.36](APPLAUSE) They are going to do some Christmas numbers for us tonight before we start the meeting, and they're under the direction of Manio Elementary School Choir Director, Ms. Holly Wittenberry, so if you would give her a round of applause as well.[112.31][112.31](APPLAUSE) And in the great spirit of what has yet to be the Christmas season, we're excited to hear some of this wonderful music. So, Ms. Wittenberry, thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Wittenberry. And certainly, if any parents here tonight, and you would like to exit with your child, feel free to do that at this time. And we'll give this amazing choir a second to exit the building, and then we'll start the meeting. So if you would, give them another round of applause, please.[345.22][345.22](APPLAUSE)[346.22][346.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[348.22][348.22](CHEERING)[350.22][350.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[352.22][352.22](CHEERING)[354.22][354.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[356.22][356.22](CHEERING)[358.22][358.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[360.22][360.22](CHEERING)[362.22][362.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[364.22][364.22](CHEERING)[366.22][366.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[368.22][368.22](CHEERING)[370.22][370.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[372.22][372.22](CHEERING)[374.22][374.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[376.22][376.22](CHEERING)[378.22][378.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[380.22][380.22](CHEERING)[382.22][382.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[384.22][384.22](CHEERING)[386.22][386.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[388.22][388.22](CHEERING)[390.22][390.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[392.22][392.22](CHEERING)[394.22][394.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[396.22][396.22](CHEERING)[398.22][398.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[400.22][400.22](CHEERING)[402.22][402.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[404.22][404.22](CHEERING)[406.22][406.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[408.22][408.22](CHEERING)[410.22][410.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[412.22][412.22](CHEERING)[414.22][414.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[416.22][416.22](CHEERING)[418.22][418.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[420.22][420.22](CHEERING)[422.22][422.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[424.22][424.22](CHEERING)[426.22][426.22](MUSIC PLAYING)[428.22][428.22](CHEERING)
We're at Manio Elementary School, and it is 5:07. Before we begin, I would like to take a moment of silence.[437.02][437.02](MUSIC PLAYING) Thank you for that. And I want to welcome Chairman Bob Woodard and Commissioner Rob Ross for joining us this evening. Thank you, we appreciate your support. And Frank Hester will join us, or will lead us in the pledge and the welcome.
Good afternoon to all. Woo, I need to slow up a little bit. It is an honor to be here tonight, and it was really nice to see all the kids singing. And although they had their masks on, you could still see that they were enjoying what they were doing, as far as singing. It's just happy to see the kids back in the classroom. It's an honor to be here this evening, presenting to you. And I'm thankful for all the support that Manio Elementary School receives from the PTA, the bus drivers, the RSOs, custodial staff, teachers, administration, and parents. We're very fortunate for all the hard work and dedication that Principal Curtis Price and his staff have put together to help our kids with the education and to get us through these challenging times. Our granddaughter attends the school here, and I enjoy seeing her at school, and I enjoy the progress that she's making in school. And she continues to enjoy being in class with her classmates, and she really enjoys being with her teacher, Ms. Dorch. And we cannot forget that the kids are our future. It's important imperative for us that we all work together to help provide the best opportunities for our kids to excel. When we do that, we on the Board of Education are all striving to make the most of every opportunity, not only to keep our kids in school, but to help them to be best positioned to deal with the future that's at our doorstep. So if you would, there's some young kids that are gonna come up to help me with the pledge of allegiance. If you could come forward? If you could please rise?[578.41][578.41](CHEERING)[580.41][580.41](MUSIC PLAYING)[582.41][582.41](CHEERING)[584.41][584.41](SINGING) To the Father of the United States of America, and to a republic where which
stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[603.54][603.54](CHEERING)[605.54][605.54](SINGING)[607.54][607.54](CHEERING)
Thank you, Frank, for that. Before we continue, I'd like to read the following statement. On September 1st, the Dare County Board of Education voted to mandate masks to be worn in all Dare County schools and school buildings. Therefore, we ask that anyone not wearing a mask at this time to please put one on. If you do not have one, there are some available near the entrance. Masks should be worn properly and appropriately, covering both the mouth and the nose throughout the meeting for everyone's safety. Anyone refusing to wear a mask will be asked to leave the building. This is a regularly scheduled business meeting that must proceed without disruption in order to conduct the business before the board this evening. Those in attendance will be expected to demonstrate respect for others, opinions, not interrupt the speakers, or disrupt the meeting with any outbursts or personal attacks. As the presiding officer over tonight's meeting, I have the legal authority to direct individuals who interrupt, disturb, or disrupt this meeting to leave. However, it is my hope that I will not have to invoke this authority. Our first order of business this evening is the approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the agenda.
Of a motion by Mr. Twitty.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bothwell. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we have an agenda. Next up, we have recognitions. Keith Parker, Dr. Parker?
I would ask if we could just pause for just two minutes. We're gonna switch out a cable on our sound system. We've had some technical difficulty on our YouTube feed, and we wanna make sure everybody's able to hear the meeting. So if we could just take two minutes, Aaron is going to switch that cable out, and we'll be ready to go. I wish we still had the choir here, they could do another number for us. Unfortunately, I was asked to leave my church choir, so I don't think I'm gonna be able to...[738.37][738.37](LAUGHTER)
Testing one, two. Testing one, two, three, four. You got that? Okay.[912.00][912.00](LAUGHTER) All right, thank you, everyone, for your patience with that. We are going to resume here, and we have the audio back working, so please give Aaron one more round of applause for helping us take care of that.[930.00][930.00](APPLAUSE) All right, dear. All right, dear. All right, we are very thankful for Manio Elementary School for hosting the Board of Education tonight. You've already heard some of the amazing students in the choir, and I do want to thank, Madam Chairman, and I do want to thank Principal Price and his team and his school, his custodial staff, his teachers, for helping us set up today, for being extremely gracious and kind to us as we've come into the school today, and somewhat disrupted a part of the school so we could set up for the meeting. So I just can't tell you how amazing the teachers are here and how gracious they've been to us. So I would like to give Manio Elementary School, the teachers and the students and the administrators, a round of applause as we start.[979.00][979.00](APPLAUSE) And at this time, we would just like to share some positivity and some amazing things that go on in this school. And it's because of the amazing teachers that do amazing work with our amazing kids. And we want to highlight some of those people and the work that they do today. A good friend of mine says that teachers save lives every day, and that teachers are heroes, and we really believe that. So we want to recognize some of these fine folks tonight. And to help us do that, I'm gonna ask Principal Price to come forward with Assistant Principal Kenan, and we're gonna bring some people up and just show some positivity and love on them. So, Mr. Price, if you'd come forward?
Sneak on this side.
All right. And you're probably gonna be heard a little bit better if you hold the mic, unfortunately, 'cause this is not peaking though. All right?
All right. Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the Board, Superintendent Farley, parents and visitors. As we begin our recognition portion tonight, I'd like to first start by recognizing our students. Our students are why we're here. And after I introduce the activity, I will call each student up individually to receive their certificate, and then we will pose for a picture as a group. This year, MES students were invited to participate in the Barefoot with a Book Summer Reading Challenge facilitated by librarian Molly Boyd. Students were encouraged to read every day throughout the summer and mark it on a tracker. This was more of a habit tracker rather than actively recording what or how long they read. Students could read any style of book, any format, for any amount of time. We just wanted them to get in the habit of reading every day. Students returned their summer reading sheets to the library and were awarded a book-themed prize bag filled with bookmarks, book-shaped erasers, book-character stickers, and an MES pencil and shirt. We're so proud of the students who worked hard at becoming amazing readers over the summer. Please join me in congratulating the following students. Logan Tarver.[1105.24][1105.24](APPLAUSE) Next, during the month of October, Ms. Boyd also invited families to help create a literary pumpkin patch in the MES library. Physical or paper pumpkins, but needed to depict a book character. There were 120 pumpkins on display in the library last week, and Ms. Boyd organized a panel of MES faculty and even central office members to vote on five categories. Please join me in congratulating our winners. As your name is called, please come and receive your certificate, followed by a picture at the end. Note, the presentation has some of the photos of our pumpkins. We were hopeful to bring them in here, but mold and science really just didn't allow it to stick in here. It was smelly enough in the library, so...[1237.15][1237.15](LAUGHTER) But we put the pictures on here to make it nice. First, we have Kennedy Noon, and her book was Fancy Nancy, Most Creative Pumpkin.[1247.26][1247.26](APPLAUSE) Next, we have Wyatt Ogwusby, Tommy Tuna.[1260.33][1260.33](APPLAUSE) So the next group was Most Humorous Pumpkin. And first one is Captain Underpants by Gavin Owens.[1280.08][1280.08](APPLAUSE) The Bidder, Silas Adams.[1291.47][1291.47](APPLAUSE) Next, we have the Cutest Pumpkin, Rainbow Fish from L.B. Daniels.[1308.03][1308.03](APPLAUSE) Pinkalicious from Avery McGee.[1319.97][1319.97](APPLAUSE) Next, we have Best Overall Paper Pumpkin, by Jaden Balance.[1335.26][1335.26](APPLAUSE) Max and the Midnight, Emily Gonzalez-Coderow.[1347.51][1347.51](APPLAUSE) Last but not least, we have Best Overall Physical Pumpkin, Yoda by Anthony Velazquez-Gonzalez.[1370.22][1370.22](APPLAUSE) A Bad Case of Stripes, Camila Hemmerite.[1384.33][1384.33](APPLAUSE) Please join me in giving them another round of applause.[1401.26][1401.26](APPLAUSE) Next, as you already see from the earlier agenda, we have some students over there from our Apple School Strings Program that have came to perform two songs for us.
All right. Okay, good. Well...
I also have some certificates for each one of you. If once I call your name, you just go up here? Max T. Bullock?
Amy Martinez Vargas.[1693.33][1693.33](APPLAUSE) Camila Resinles Gonzalez.[1701.47][1701.47](APPLAUSE) Camila Ann Hemmerite.[1708.62][1708.62](APPLAUSE) Not many kids had to hold an instrument and shake hands at the same time. Just give them... Alexa Quezada Sanchez.[1734.51][1734.51](APPLAUSE) Carla Vasquez Mendez.[1757.62][1757.62](APPLAUSE) Axel Perez Islava.[1780.33][1780.33](APPLAUSE) ... Gray Stein. I also like to recognize Elsie Monroe, who's a Manio High School intern. And I can't forget about Ms. Leslie Erickson and Ms. Donna Travette. Now, I would like to recognize some of our amazing educators here at MES. First, I'd like to recognize our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Rachel Eisler. Next, I'd like to recognize our Classified Employee of the Year, Ms. Louise Gergrich. Next, I'd like to recognize Ms. Sabrina Ramirez for completing her Masters in Curriculum Next, I'd like to recognize Ms. Udi Suarez, who completed her Masters in Greensboro College in May 2021 and has led the chorus club, as you saw earlier, and also presented for the DCS Ignite Conference on Rigor and Relevance Through Relationships. Next, I would like to recognize Mr. Reese Lamborg, who also presented at the DCS Ignite Conference on Space Cadets, Chronic Blurers, and Pigpens: Identifying and Supporting Executive She got most creative title. Well, here's our partner right now, Ms. Ida Ohengudin. She also presented at the DCS Ignite Conference. Next, I'd like to call up Ms. Marley Boyd, who presented at the Ignite Conference on Professional Portfolios for Evaluation Excellence and was a facilitator for the pair with the book while also facilitating the Literally Pumpkin Patch Project. Next, I'd like to recognize Ms. Carol Dunn for her presentation for the DCS Ignite Conference on Ozbots, Not Just for Coding. Next, I'd like to recognize Ms. Holly Rittenberry for her chorus club lead, and she also presented at the Ignite Conference, but she did give me a warning that she had to go somewhere first on, just wanted to recognize that. Way to go, Holly. Thank you, Holly. Next, I'd like to recognize Ms. Helen Corbett. She's an AIG Coordinator, and she did Coffee Talk with Gifted at the DCS Ignite Conference. Last but not least, I'd like to recognize Mr. Ted Gordon for his presenting at the DCS
Thank you, Principal Price, and for all of your staff and students that came forward. Those are some amazing recognitions. I do want to say, we have one other recognition, but I also want to, again, thank the Manio Elementary School staff for sharing tonight, and I can tell you that I had the pleasure of being a high school teacher, but I also had the pleasure of serving as an elementary school principal. And I quickly found out when I came to an elementary school that the month of November and December are the two most exciting months ever for an elementary school. And if you want to have Thanksgiving and Christmas celebrated the right way, you just go to an elementary school. So I want to thank everybody for sharing tonight, for the choir, for the orchestra, and for the amazing staff and students that came forward. So as we conclude that portion of the recognitions, please, just one more time, give them a round of applause. Thank you all. I would also like to encourage everyone to come to the actual Christmas concert here in December, and you can hear the full ensemble for Ms. Rittenberry's choir, so that would be a wonderful thing. Our final recognition tonight, Madam Chair, is to recognize a very special person, and it is fitting that we would do that at Manio Elementary School, because this wonderful person taught here at this school for many years, and it's like coming home. So we would like to recognize former Board of Education member and chairperson, B. Bassnight. So it's Bassnight, if you would come forward. Ms. Bassnight served as chairperson of the Derrick County Board of Education from 2016 to 2020. We are going to take a photograph of the entire board, so I would invite the board to come around front. But Ms. Bassnight was one of the first people that I met when I came to Derrick County, and I can tell you there is not a nicer, kinder person that I have met, and I appreciate all of your years of service, both as a teacher and as a board member, Ms. Bassnight. And certainly tonight, you were able to see some former students in the audience, and I even heard some folks commenting about when they came through your classroom, and certainly you've made such an impact on the lives of kids and such an impact on the Board of Education. So we greatly appreciate your service, and we appreciate you accepting this recognition on behalf of the Board of Education. Madam Chairman, that concludes our recognition portion of the evening tonight, so we're thankful to have had the opportunity to share those. Thank you.
Thank you. Lots of good stuff happening. I love that Barefoot with a Book is such a catchy way to say that. I just love that. I think that's great. And the pumpkins, the creativity on the pumpkins is phenomenal. Okay, next up, we have the instructional highlights.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board, and Dr. Farley. Tonight, our highlight takes on a different lens. Tonight, we dive deep into the lens of learning as we highlight our elementary initiatives that include our multi-tiered system of support, the reading recovery program, and the Orton-Gillingham method. These initiatives are designed to meet children where they are and continue to grow and support their learning. Many heartfelt thanks to our hardworking administrative team, faculty, and staff at Manio Elementary for their commitment, flexibility, and most of all, all the love they show each day to their students. I'm proud to welcome Mr. Price back to the podium as we highlight Learning in Action at Manio Elementary School. Thank you.
Good evening, once again. I'd like to first just thank the families that are here right now, listening to students singing, hearing about their devotion to reading, and seeing their creative imagination this season has been a truly memorable experience for me right now. But as we look at tonight's instructional highlight, I'd like to first take a moment to thank some people that have been a part of making this video. So those people are, some of them are in the crowd right now, but you will see not only, but Angela Doughty, Ms. Elizabeth Keenan, Ms. Jordan Reeks, Ms. Andrea Wiggins, Mr. Tom Gordon, and Mrs. Lauren Dibble, if you don't mind giving them a round of applause. So tonight's instructional highlight is titled Learning in Action, where you will get a quick glimpse into our school's MTSS approach to teaching and learning while getting to know a couple extraordinary teachers and administrators along the way. I hope that you enjoy this highlight, because when it comes to learning, we believe it is important to model learning as adults, and you will see how Learning in Action at MES is about our teachers' devotion to learning best practices and our students' learning from those practices so that everyone is growing and succeeding together. Curtis Price here, Principal of Manio Elementary School. Today, we will give you a tour of the school. Curtis Price here, Principal of Manio Elementary School. Today, we will give you a tour of the school and show you Learning in Action. Come on.
At Manio Elementary, Learning in Action helps to develop core teaching and learning processes throughout the entire school. One major component of Learning in Action is the successful implementation of MTSS.
MTSS is a three-tiered system that helps to ensure that we close the gaps with our students who may be below grade level. It starts with Tier One, where that's all of our students. Tier Two is the bottom 20%, and that's where we come in and help problem solve with the teachers, interventions that will best support that student to help close those gaps. Tier Three gets more intense with the interventions that we do, so we'll bring in more support, like our math interventionist.
My name is Ted Gordon, and I'm a math interventionist here at Manio Elementary School. I think Learning in Action is like the three Es, that's what I like to call it, where you walk in and students should be engaged. The teachers and students should be enthusiastic about learning, and the teacher should have lots of energy. And then in terms of MTSS, I help teachers with improved Tier One instruction by going in there and doing small groups with them. And then I pull kids out too to help with some Tier Two math interventions.
My name is Lauren Dibble. I am an EC teacher here at Manio Elementary School. I am also the co-chair of our MTSS team. My role here is to help our MTSS team problem solve, specifically with interventions. We want to look at the lowest foundational skill, and then together, we decide on research-based interventions that would support those skills.
I am the ELA specialist at Manio Elementary School, and I also teach reading recovery. Reading Recovery is a program where we work with students one-on-one, and we meet them at their individual level, and we start with what they know, and we progress them through the levels in that way. Each lesson for each child is an individual lesson based on what they know. And it's wonderful, because you make a personal connection with your students, and by doing that, you're able to meet their individual needs, because with this relationship, you can see where their strengths are, and you can learn to help build on those strengths, which helps them grow at a much faster rate.
My toy grows in the dark.
Excellent.
We not only do reading as in familiar texts, so they're reading and rereading stories over and over again to help them build their sight word recognition. We also help with the writing piece of reading, so we help them with being able to fill in the gaps of the words and the sounds that they can't hear yet. And so with that and through that, over a 20-week period of time, they'll be able to actually read and spell those words that they've been seeing every day.
So each week, we hold an MTSS meeting, where we schedule teachers to come in 10 to 15 minutes, and we do what we call Kid Talks, where the teacher is asked to bring in the intervention data that they have been collecting for the last four weeks. We review that data to see if there's growth, and during that meeting, we determine whether or not we need to intensify the interventions, or maybe that intervention's not working and we need to turn around and regroup and decide on a different intervention to put in place.
I'm Andrea Wiggins. I'm an ELA interventionist here at Manio Elementary School. I'm also in the training program for Orton-Gillingham Reading Approach, and it's based on the science of reading. And it's a very important program, because children right now, we know, a lot of children are behind, and it's a multisensory approach to reading, so it focuses on visual, auditory, and kinesthetic learning. It's beneficial, because it's going to help students' social, emotional growth and their academic growth. We want to see a good jump in their reading this year.
So especially this year, with everything that we've been through in the last couple of years, it's just really important to keep filling in these gaps that have just been so apparent to us in the last couple. And so this is just another way that we can help support this and support these kids and help bridge the gaps that have been made.
It's just been 11 weeks, and I've seen so much growth in my math groups, where the teachers are very organized and have, you know, we got those groups running smoothly now. And so just having, you know, an extra certified teacher in the room, I see, I think it's making a big difference with lots of the students.
The reason why I have worked to grow this MTSS team is because I believe that with this team, we are helping to close those achievement gaps of students here at MES.
Curtis Price here. That's me. I'm here. Well, first of all, thank everybody here who was a part of that video again, and just wanted to highlight that DCS is the first public school district to bring Orton-Gillingham into its schools, and also this is the first formal year of reading recovery. Both of those programs you saw highlighted in this video, and I want to just thank you guys for your attention, and if you have any questions, I'm open for it.
I love to see the teachers working together to problem solve and troubleshoot with the kids, recognizing that some way might not work for that child, and putting their heads together and coming up with another solution. It's great.
Yeah, in a big school, we hear the saying, I'll take from Keith, many hands made for light work, and this big building is a community approach. And I think the environment that the teachers create and the way they problem solve together fosters to our students, and we see that throughout the building. So it's a special place to be a part of.
Anybody have anything? Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
All right, next we have public comment. Before we start, I just want to say the Dare County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled board meetings. This portion of the meeting is for the board to hear matters of interest and concern from the public. Public comment is not intended to be a dialogue for questions and answers or impromptu board responses. The board may determine whether to provide information or responses to public comments if necessary or appropriate at a later time. Concerns regarding school personnel are usually most effectively addressed within the administration at the school or central office level or through the existing board policies, and those, all of those alternatives are encouraged by the board. The board appreciates courteous and respectful presentations of seen vulgar, indecent, abusive, threatening, or profane statements, or statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or imminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. Each person will be granted three minutes. We will be using an electronic timing system that will provide the speaker with a green light when the time starts. It will move to yellow when you have one minute left. When the red light comes on, it indicates your time is up, and you will be asked to leave the podium to allow for the next speaker. Okay, we have, first up, Diane Childress.
Madam Chair, if I could, I'd just share one brief thing with anyone making a public comment. So our microphone holder is not positioned to be able to pick up anyone that's speaking, so we're going to ask everyone to hold the microphone, and if you would, hold it close to your face there when you're speaking, and then when you're done, you can just simply lay the microphone on the podium here, and the next person can pick it up and use it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Diane Childress, and I am the principal at First Flight Middle School. I learned this month that there is a community group that is concerned about some of the training that our teachers and staff attended this year, so I am here to clarify and share what it is that we are doing. Two years in a row, our teachers completed the Teachers Working Conditions Survey, which identified an area of improvement related to how the administration supported teachers in dealing with disruptive students. Furthermore, following remote learning, we recognize that our entire staff is going to have to work extra hard to help our students remember, understand, practice, and follow school-wide expectations so that our teachers can teach and our students can learn. We were offered an opportunity to learn school-wide consistent strategies and best practices to help make this a reality. When students come to First Flight Middle School, we want all of them to be able to have access to a great education. We don't want one teacher, one student, excuse me, to have Teacher A, who completes 300 worksheets a week, and another student to have Teacher B, who immerses her students in projects and activities to engage learners. The same is true with behaviors. We don't want one of our teachers to write an office referral for every student who interrupts instruction, and another teacher down the hall to allow for constant disruptions with no consequences. The steps involved in our training focus on making sure students are actively engaged in what the teacher is asking students to do and leveling the playing field so students are set up for success. Here they are. Step one, teachers were taught to give explicit directions. Instead of saying, "Okay, move to your next station," a teacher would say, "When I say go, use a voice level of zero, you're going to take your computer and your pencil and move to the right. You will have 15 seconds to do so." Step two, teachers were taught to use a positive narration. For example, instead of focusing on students who forgot to bring their computers or pencils or who aren't quiet or moving quickly to the next station, the teacher is narrating the students who are doing the right thing. Not only does this reinforce positive behavior, but it reminds the students who forgot, didn't hear, or just need an extra boost. Step three, teachers were taught to offer incentives or consequences. Students or groups of students will earn points toward class incentives, such as a kickball game or a popcorn party, for following expectations and doing their best work. And we now have school-wide consequences that teachers are to follow if students are interrupting the learning of others. Step four, lastly but most importantly, teachers were reminded about the importance of building relationships with their students. When a teacher takes the time to get to know students' abilities, talents, interests, and hopes and dreams, chances are those students will be more involved in doing the right thing. That's it. Our teachers are still practicing these strategies throughout the building at different stages, but overall, our repeat referrals have decreased and students are more engaged. I have an open door. I'm more than happy for anyone to reach out by phone, email, or make an appointment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Diane. Next, we have Charles Parker.
Good evening. My name is Charles Parker. I'm a resident of Dare County, and I've heard through the grapevine and through the air that there'll be people speaking tonight about CRT. It's been words that are letters and are spread around the educational community from federal to state to local level, and I'd like to talk about that for a minute. Fifty years ago, I received a bachelor's degree in history. At that time, I knew of two black men in American history, Christmas Addicts and George Washington Carver. A huge part of American history and our local history has been missing. Talking about CRT has nothing to do with our history. What I would like to see is our critical race history, things that haven't been brought forth in centuries because of the way the world was. Right now, here's some local history. I want our schools to teach our history, not just white history, but American history. So here's the education part. Local history. The Second North Carolina Colored Infantry, a unit of previously enslaved people from around Roanoke Island. They were brought into the Union Army as the 36th U.S. Colored Infantry. Some names in that union unit may seem familiar. Richard Etheridge, George W. Bowser, Anton McLeese, who died in a hospital in 326, 1864, Field Midget, Lawrence Midget, killed by a sniper at Petersburg, 816, 1864. Richard Etheridge also wrote a letter to his commander, seeking help with the deplorable conditions in the Freedmen's Colony. The 36th was not mustered out locally after the war like almost all military units on the Union side. They were sent to Texas, where they became the Buffalo Soldiers of Western Fame, the Ninth and Tenth Cavalry, and the 24th Infantry. Now here's my family connection. Spanish-American War, and Teddy Roosevelt without orders, impetuously charged up San Juan Hill. On his flank, the 71st New York and the 24th Infantry clambered up the slope to protect his flanks. Roosevelt had a better presentation. My grandmother's cousin was in the 71st. My dad talked with and about that with him. I have a copy for you that I'll give to you of the first paragraph of a monograph written by a company of the 71st in 1899. In the fog of war, those two units, the 24th and 71st, were intermixed, were wounded, died, took care of their dead, wounded.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Thank you, your time is up, I'm sorry. Next, we have Donna, uh, Diet? If I pronounced that wrong, I apologize.
Trevette.
Okay, I didn't read it right. Thank you.
That's okay. I answered anything most of the time. So I was hoping to be a little bit closer to the strings performance, but hopefully y'all can remember those great twangs and plucks. I'm Donna Trevette, and I'm here representing the Dare County Youth Orchestra. I'm the president of the board, and it's so wonderful to be here. Madam Chairman, distinguished board members, and Dr. Farley, thank you for giving me this privilege to speak to you tonight. Our program has grown substantially thanks to your support. We have 115 students enrolled this year, including the 17 that you saw tonight, which is just amazing. And Ms. Erickson, as she was leaving tonight, she said, "Please make it clear, we've only been practicing for six weeks." So just so you know, but I thought, does anyone play a string instrument? It is so hard, and it's amazing what those kids did tonight. I didn't think it would be that good, so y'all definitely were treated to a wonderful, wonderful noise. We also have a program that we've recently restarted at Kate Patteras Elementary, and we have 15 kids enrolled there. So our program is very successful, and I'm very excited about that, if you can't tell. Jerry Manolis was the founder of Dare County Youth Orchestra. I don't know how many knew him, but he passed away a few weeks ago, and we'll be recognizing him at our Isle County Orchestra Evening, which will be on February 8th. Please write that on your calendars right now, board members, because it will be a beautiful performance of all of our strings kids. And then lastly, I have a quote that was in the paper a couple of days ago by John Lithgow. Does everyone know him? He's an actor. Creativity is a skill. It is foundational. So much can be built on creative writing, the visual arts, music, drama, and dance that will allow children to not only survive our tumultuous times, but also to thrive. So important, especially right now, creativity. Arts should be a vital part of every child's education. Arts education funding should be adequate and equitable. Schools should recruit, develop, and support arts education. Thank you, all of you, for supporting arts education. It's very important to our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Amanda Lotus.
Hi, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Pick up the microphone.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. In August of 2021, the FDA announced their approval of the first COVID-19 jab. The FDA.gov news release stated, "The vaccine has been known as the Pfizer-BioNTech COVID-19 vaccine and will now be marketed as Comirnaty." Have you guys heard of Comirnaty? So the public has been led to believe that the jab currently on the market has full FDA approval, which is nothing short of a bait and switch. Pfizer's BioNTech COVID-19 vaccine that is called Comirnaty is FDA-approved. Pfizer's BioNTech COVID-19 vaccine that is not called Comirnaty is still under emergency use authorization. The latter is what is being administered in the five out of six pharmacies that I spoke with today in Dare County. Why would the FDA make an approval so unclear? If this FDA approval was an attempt to establish public trust, they have failed. With help from big government and Big Pharma, this message has been broadcast across the nation. Pfizer's COVID vaccine is FDA-approved, let's start mandating it. The government and pharmaceutical companies are well aware that most people will not think to check the actual labels. The FDA pointed out that the licensed Pfizer Comirnaty vaccine and the existing EUA Pfizer vaccine are legally distinct, but proclaims that their differences do not impact safety or effectiveness. However, there's a huge real-world difference between products approved under EUA compared with those the FDA has fully licensed. EUA products are experimental under U.S. law. The Nuremberg Code and federal regulations state that no one can force a human being to participate in an experiment. And thanks to the PREP Act of March 2020, it looks like Pfizer will be protected from liability for both their EUA and FDA-approved jabs. This latest FDA scheme is designed to provoke businesses and schools into the enforcement of COVID jab mandates, while the American public believes the mandates are legal. They may have succeeded in fooling some thousands of unsuspecting people into succumbing to the pressures imposed by mandates due to this legal trickery, but if the entire point of this exercise was to instill confidence in an already broken and corrupt system, millions remain justifiably skeptical. So I ask y'all, if you can just research Comirnaty, just search engine it, type in Comirnaty and legally distinct, and you'll see what I'm talking about. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Betty Selby. Is that right? Am I reading that right? Betty... I can't. That's what I said, Betty Selby. Oh, there you are. Hi, Betty.
Hi. Hi, my name is Betty Selby. I am recently retired from Dare County Schools after 33 years where I served. Enjoy most of, most all days. I wanted to say first to this board, Dr. Farley and his team, thank you for the diversity that you have put into Dare County Schools. We know, in my 33 years, there's more diversity of Black and Brown administrators, teachers, staff than I remember in my career there, so thank you. Continue to work. I'm here to discuss with you critical race theory. I hear that this board is willing to pull out certain parts of Black history. Certain parts. Of course, you don't do it boldly or publicly. My question to you is, critical race theory has been around for 40 years, 40 whole years, and what part of Black history do you want pulled out? What part makes you feel uncomfortable? I mean, if you feel uncomfortable about history, no history should be taught. What part of Black history would you like to pull out? Is it the lynching? Is it the rapes? Is it the babies being snatched? What part would you like of Black history make you feel uncomfortable? I ask that question. Of course, I don't get a response, but if you're going to teach history, you need to teach all history as it came. I'm not sure what the members of the Board of Dare County Schools who happened to be elected. I'm not sure exactly what part, but I will say to you, you can't pick and choose curriculum. It's mandated, as you know, by the Department of Public Instruction. So that's my question. Feel free to email me with your response, or if you're uncomfortable, don't email me at all. So thank you for your time. Thank you for, um, let's see, listening, but I do know
Thank you, Betty.
I do know that we have two particular members that I know.
Betty, your time is up.
I know, it is up.
Sorry. Next, we have Melanie Brewer.
My name is Melanie, and my family lives in Kill Devil Hills. We removed our children from the Dare County School System in August of 2020. I knew where this was all headed and did not want to put them through this. For more information on homeschool options, please visit DareToShareOBX.org. Dearest Board of Education members, school staff, and school principals, I'm so glad that me wearing a pair of underpants on my face provides you with a feeling of safety. If you can zoom in, this says Victoria's Secret. This mask holds no protection, and neither do any of the others. All of you going along with us are following the darkness and evil. We don't have to scare or threaten, whatever God or karma you may or may not believe in will indefinitely do it for us. First question, how many hours does Sheila Davies have in OSHA Regulations and Infection Control? How many hours do you all have? I would like to know- I would like to know her credentials and yours, since y'all are making all of these healthcare and infection control decisions for the children of Dare County. Fun fact, I have 128 hours of OSHA and infection control training as a previous registered nurse of 10 years. I worked 14 hospitals with 16 eight-hour in-service days for each annual or new hire training. That's 128 total hours. How many hours of training do you guys have? For the parents out there allowing this administration to make healthcare decisions for your children, you might want to think twice about putting the lives of your children in their hands. These breathing restrictions, muzzles, or underpants, whatever you may call them, are abusive and are restricting your children's ability to breathe while filling their lungs with dangerous pathogens. Now for my second set of questions, for the parents here or at home, are you sick of a tyrannical government and system telling you how to parent your children? Are you sick of your children learning information that is not appropriate for adults to even learn about? See the pornographic books found in DCS libraries on the Dare To Share website. Are you tired of your family's voice being silenced? Are you tired of your children's complaints being ignored and their behavior manipulated and/or discriminated against? Then homeschool is the option for you. The Outer Banks has a wide variety of alternative options, including a large homeschool network, Pod Systems, private tutors, tutoring services, and private Christian and non-Christian school options. There, your children can speak what they feel and breathe freely again. They are allowed to play with and have unimpeded interaction with other children, and guess what, guys? They are still alive and well. I know it is scary to step back and do something different than what you have always done, but let me tell you, the end result is so worth it. My daughters have blossomed and are reading chapter books, learning Spanish, creating artwork, and playing multiple instruments: cello, violin, piano, mandolin, ukuleles. They are all nine, eight, and seven. Taking them out of this indoctrination system has allowed them to grow in ways we could never have imagined. God or whoever you believe in will support you on this journey, I promise, because they supported us. We pay a mortgage payment.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Next, we have Corinne West.
Hello, my name is Corinne West, and I'm a teacher at First Flight Elementary School. I started teaching, you could say, my second career. I've subbed at every single Dare County School. I started at Nag's Head Elementary as an assistant. I was hired at Manuel Elementary School as a fifth-grade teacher, and now at First Flight Elementary School. So with everything going on, we just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for supporting and helping us. Thank you for listening to us. Thank you to parents. Thank you for students. Thank you to staff, administration. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. West. Next, we have David Bragg.
Hello, I'm going to address the National School Board Administration, NSBA. They have sent an apology letter to the Attorney General Merrick Garland that was used to target parents as domestic terrorists. The letter was based on a false premise concerning a father that was arrested after he was ignored by the superintendent and the school board, that he was concerned about the actual rape of his daughter, which they both denied having occurred. The AG refused to retract his letter and use the DOGA and the FBI to target parents. This is the over-the-top use of the federal government to try to silence the concerned citizens of this country. A Brief History of the Socialist Policy. The NBSA letter is very suggestive of the themes very long presented in our schools and our society, starting over a century ago with the sainted John Dewey, who almost single-handedly got the ball rolling for the American public. Schools were to be ripped from the control of parents in local communities and placed in the hands of professional, credentialed teachers and administrators. No longer would schools be centered on the individual development and accomplishment, but like the Prussian system so much admired by Dewey, the schools would be designed to provide the needs of the state, not the needs of the student, not the wishes or the values of the parents. Laborers and drawers of water, where the modern state needed, not more doctors, lawyers, poets, preachers, or philosophers. A few private schools run on the English model would take care of that and become the preserver of the upper class, which is now the system as it remains today. But in addition to ginning out the practical workers, Dewey was also interested in remaking the core benefit beliefs of the student. Dewey was a militant atheist, and regarded any elementary student who believed in Christianity or any other religion is mentally ill, with the school's role to cure the child. Thus, as you may have noticed over the past century, any and all references to traditional religion has been ripped root and branch out of our public school. As a substitute to the religion, whatever was useful to the state, which was to be instilled, meaning a secular materialism, to which was attached whatever sub issue destruction of any traditional sexual morality, recycling, environmentalism, and now such thing as, yes, critical race theory, and the degradation, to degrade the American experience and all that it and the West has traditionally stood for. We cannot allow our country to be slowly turned into a socialist or globalist nation. The latest test scores have revealed that the education system is failing our children.
Thank you, Mr. Bragg. Your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Bragg. Your time is up. Thank you. Anthony Leon.
Jack? All right, cool. Oh, there's my light. All right. Thank you guys very much for allowing me to speak. I'm here because I've, just like everybody else heard talked, we're going to talk about CRT, or you guys are going to vote on it at some point. It's super obvious that it's not being, these college-level courses are not being taught within our schools. Some of these ideas may permeate through, but when it comes to this vote that we would be having, we're obviously not voting on instilling an entire CRT platform within our curriculum. We're going to be voting to not have CRT talked about within the schools. So I ask, why do we do that? Sometimes, people get uncomfortable with things. And if we're stopping this to stop having uncomfortable conversations, is that the right thing to do? When you bring ideas that challenge the way that we've always thought and we've always talked about, and you bring those to light and people get uncomfortable, the hard work in creating good relations between people who think differently is in those hard conversations. And that's where it comes from. So it's really easy to sit and pick a side, and it's really easy to say no. But as a person with integrity, the right thing to do is to sit down and work through these issues, instead of just kicking it down the road and saying, "We won't talk about that." And it's an okay thing to teach your children. You don't need to teach it to them full bore when they're young, but you can at least tell them the truth about things that have happened. The reality is, history has been terrible, and we have to at least talk about this. And I come from an area of knowledge in that, as I've made historical documentaries, I have an award from the North Carolina Historical Society for a documentary we made about slave watermen in the state. That's not something I've ever heard about when I went through school. It was something I had to research personally. These are hard topics, but we are also all neighbors, and we all need to come together and work to create a better area and a better place for our youth and our kids to come up in. We have to be responsible, and we have to set a good example. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Michael Sanchez. Michelle, I'm sorry. Mikel. Sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mikel Alamedine Sanchez, and I'm the mother of four children, two who graduated from Dare County Schools and two who currently attend Dare County Schools. I'm also a substitute teacher in Dare County, and I'm grateful and honored to have been working alongside amazing and dedicated school staff and teachers over the past two years. I want to take this opportunity to thank these teachers and the administrators, as well as the school board, the Health Department, and our superintendent, who have taken a very challenging few years and made the sometimes difficult decisions to ensure and create a safe environment for our children and teachers to continue to learn and grow in. My youngest daughter is in the dual-language immersion program, and I fully appreciate the challenges each of her teachers have faced and the measures they have taken to create an immersion experience while juggling remote learning and teaching in person while wearing masks. As a substitute teacher, I have witnessed how passionate and dedicated these teachers are to their students' growth and learning. I've also experienced firsthand how much our students love being in the classroom and how adaptable and appreciative they are. I have substituted every single day I was available, and I can honestly say that I never once heard a student complain about wearing a mask. They're learning and growing and exploring in a safe and supportive environment, and I have felt comfortable and safe to offer myself as a substitute to Dare County teachers. Had we not had this mask mandate in our schools, I would not have felt comfortable doing so. As a mom to a leukemia survivor, I know firsthand that masks help protect the spread of illnesses. This information is based on scientific facts from infectious disease specialists I know and I trust. My family wore masks for over a year, long before mask-wearing became the norm, and never once suffered from it. You don't need me to point out the decrease in COVID cases or number of quarantined students since the school board made the wise decision to mandate masks in our schools. And I'm hopeful that you will continue to put the health and safety of our children and our dedicated school staff as a priority throughout the semester so that our students can continue to learn in person and that teachers can continue to feel safe while they teach. We have all been faced with the unprecedented challenges over the past two years, yet I truly believe that we, as a school district and as a community, have also been given an amazing learning opportunity to model and teach our children about compassion, respect, and accountability. My oldest son, an 2015 alumnus of First Flight High School, is now a grad student, working towards his Masters in History Education. As we discussed the future of education recently, I was reminded about what I hope for our own children, as well as our society as a whole, to create an environment that encourages critical thinking, not just regurgitation of facts, that challenges our young people to delve into the true stories of our past, to learn from our mistakes and reflect.
Thank you, I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mike Dinkle.
Good evening. My name is Mike Dinkle. I have three children that are in Dare County School right now, and I just wanted to come out and say that I, and also, I do work with several teachers outside of school. They have part-time jobs where I work. And I just have to say, thank you very much for everything you do. Thank you for all that you put up with. My son hated pre-K. Getting him dressed was so terrible. I hated it every morning. But ever since he's been going to Miss Smalley's kindergarten class, he meets me at the door with his shoes on, ready to go, and I have been getting him to school 10 minutes early every day. That never happens. Now, with all that being said, I also have two high school children that go to, one in ninth and one in 11th grade, two totally different personalities, that are being totally met with the way that they should be educated. Nick is completely on his own, likes to be not antisocial, just not his big thing. Kara, the complete opposite, social butterfly, loves to be involved. But they are both being met with everything they need educationally. So I do have to say, thank for everything that everyone does, and I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri Smalley.
I'm the president of the Dare County Chapter of the North Carolina Association of Educators. I'm also the proud graduate of Manuel High School and the proud mom of three First Flight High School graduates. My husband and I have taught in Dare County Schools for more than 20 years, and we are honored to be a part of this community. I would first like to thank the board for their continued commitment and support during these especially difficult times. But most importantly, I want to commend the staff and teachers of Dare County Schools who go above and beyond every day. Most of you don't get to see what goes on behind the scenes on a daily basis. I am fortunate enough to witness the amazing dedication this group brings to our students and their colleagues despite the challenges and ever-changing expectations. We continually support the academic growth and well-being of our students, and we hope this community will continue to support us in this endeavor.
Thank you. Jessica Sands. Jessica Sands.
My name is Jessica Sands, and I've been a parent in Dare County Schools for 10 years. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I've been actively involved in the schools through PTO, school improvement teams, parent advisory committees. Our family has volunteered money and time to these schools, and I care deeply that they are a positive and nurturing place for all of our children. I've watched every single board meeting since the pandemic began, and today I am here to flip the script and talk about the people who matter the most in education, these teachers. Like it or not, these beautiful humans spend more awake hours with our children than we do. So starting today, I'm bowing out of discussing these issues and shifting my focus to them. It's time for us in this room to get back to talking about educating our children and supporting the professionals that we have in place to do that. Today, I'm going to recognize a dozen teachers for how they've molded my children over the last 10 years. The yes, they teach science, math, social studies, the arts, all of that. But that's not what matters most to me and my husband. Mrs. Brinkley showed my child compassion when she held her tight that day in kindergarten when she couldn't stop crying. Mrs. Watson taught both of my children to read. That's something we will never forget. Mrs. Smalley, your second shout-out tonight, showed my child the joy of spending time outside in the rain when they floated bottle caps down the stream. I was finding bottle caps in my son's laundry for a year after that. Mrs. McGee helped my son find his voice when he proudly informed his third-grade class that there are actually seven, or was it eight? I don't know, states of matter. And then she let him teach the class about that. Mrs. Fulcher demonstrated to both my kids for years that using kindness is always how we talk to each other. Mrs. Novsker encouraged my son to keep growing when she pushed him to dive deeper into his math work beyond the third grade. Mrs. West motivated my son to keep growing when she pushed, when Sheri, sorry, pushed him to share his love of learning when she asked him to teach a mini lesson in parabolic geometry to his friends. Mrs. Ogburn encouraged my child to help others when she empowered her students to coach each other in math class. Mrs. Lowe boosted my child's confidence when she agreed to help bring his idea of a Rubik's Cube Club to fruition in the middle school. Mrs. Curtis, just last week, inspired my child to want to be a civil engineer with her recent project of creating his own civilization. Mr. Phelan shows my child that he supports students' needs to take their own time with their learning when he allows them to work at their own pace. Mr. Waters teaches my daughter to respect others' opinions and thoughts in class debates. This has made for amazing table conversations.
Thank you, Ms. Sands, your time is up.
Maybe we all need to take his civics class.
Thank you. Next, we have Macy Chavez. Macy Chavez.
Hi, my name is Macy. I'm a mom of three kids in Dare County Schools, a second grader and a kindergartner in the dual-language immersion program, and a three-year-old on an IEP. Thank you, Dr. Farley, your central office team, teachers, and staff. You are the reason for the little-to-no COVID transmission in schools. We can look no further than our own district to see that masks work, the policies and procedures you have put in place are working, and most importantly, it has not interrupted learning for our students. The programs and personnel you have created using COVID funds have made a huge impact for my family, and for that, we are grateful. for my family, and for that, we are grateful. The summer school program was engaging and kept my children learning at grade level. We are also fortunate to have both a math and reading interventionist at Kitty Hawk Elementary, a result of COVID funds, whereas each Dare County School had the opportunity to hire two positions to help support their students. So thank you. To the Board of Education, as we continue to navigate COVID in Dare County Schools, I plead that you continue to follow the recommendations of our national, state, and local medical and scientific leaders. You have received several requests urging you to follow the CDC guidelines from our local medical providers, specifically over the past few months. The strong schools, North Carolina Public Health Toolkit has been created under the guidance of COVID experts from both the state and national level. These local, state, and national experts are literally putting themselves between us and the virus. They are the ones who are actually treating COVID in our hospitals and medical offices, and they are the ones studying COVID in laboratories. They know COVID better than you or I. We, as parents, should not be so nervous every month not knowing if you're going to follow the guidance and information provided to you by those who know COVID best. We should not have to worry that you and our children's medical providers are not on the same page as to what is going to keep our children the healthiest in our schools. Good leaders know what they do not know and surround themselves with people that do. You have amazing resources at your disposal. Please use them. The same science that's asking you to take COVID seriously by wearing a mask, getting vaccinated, and putting proper measures in our schools is the same science that treats your broken bones, cures cancer, and cares for you when you are sick. It's hypocrisy to adhere to one but defy the other. I ask my kids two questions at the end of every day. One is, what was one of the best parts of their day at school? And two is, what was one thing they would like to change about their day if they had the power to? And not once have they said that wearing a mask was something that they would want to change about their day. Is it their favorite thing? Probably not, but it's never been the worst thing about their day either. They're thriving being in school and will choose to wear a mask or follow different or new procedures to ensure they keep it that way. We cannot allow our Board of Education meetings to be a platform for the spread of hatred and misinformation. We are better than that. Our teachers, staff, and students deserve more than that. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Jessica Ferns.
I want to start by saying thank you. I'm sure listening to the banter back and forth each month has gotten exhausting, so thank you for showing up and continuing to listen. I also want to say I come in peace. All of us here have the same intentions. We love our kids, we want what's best for them. There are friends of mine who spoke on each side of the mask issue tonight, and that's okay. There are people who I connect with on many other levels, and we agree on many other issues. We all raise our children respectfully, we value nutrition, we love the outdoors, our kids play sports together, bump into each other at coffee shops, whatever it is, these are members of our community who we get along with and many I call my friends. I hate that this is tearing everyone apart when ultimately we all agree we want happy and healthy kids. I don't like masks, and I can't wait till masks aren't a thing. I get emotional when I talk about it. I cannot wait until I can sit in the cafeteria without my daughter at school and meet all of our little friends. I feel robbed of experiencing kindergarten with my daughter. I hate COVID, and I am sure everyone in the room can agree we hate COVID. But this isn't about opinions. This is simply about looking at the numbers and seeing that the mandate is doing what the mandate is supposed to be doing. Numbers are down, and our kids are in school. It's as simple as that. Until COVID isn't a rampant thing, we just have to suck it up. We have to stay out of schools, we send our kids with masks, we cancel fun events, we miss some big milestones for our school-aged kids. It's super lame, I get it, but sometimes the right thing and the lame thing are the same. We all want happy, healthy kids, and we got both. Our kids are happy. I know we project a lot on them, but every child, teacher, and sub I have asked has told me that they would rather wear the mask and stay in school socializing than not. Our kids are healthy. The numbers in the county are significantly lower than they were before the mandate. We cannot deny that. Please do not deny facts by letting emotions take the reign. With the holidays coming up, I hope the Board will realize that it would be irresponsible to remove the mandate at this time. Let's keep it up, at least until after the break, we can see how the county does with the numbers over a busy travel season. Push forward a little bit more until we feel safe sending our kids back to school without masks. And while I have a few more seconds, I want to say a big, big thank you to all of the teachers and school staff. You are the true MVPs. I'm going to end with this: show the teachers how much they are appreciated in their paychecks. The red t-shirts are nice, the little mugs are cute, but a raise would be nicer.
Thank you. Kate Serino.
Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Kate Serino. So the last time that we met, I addressed the CDC COVID strings attached to federal lesser funding. But tonight, I'd like to take a look at another facet of Education, Inc., another part of the truly ugly picture that's coming into focus for bureaucrats and their 501(c)(3) pals to make money off of North Carolina school students. So let's talk SEL, Social Emotional Learning. There's a huge top-down $50 million push to implement SEL in all North Carolina schools across every subject area. First of all, it takes very little research to discern that SEL is riddled with CRT. CRT has become a truly toxic term, and with respect to those folks here tonight, it is not the important teaching of Black history, it is Marxist political indoctrination. Unfortunately, it has been rolled into the SEL curriculum under the guise of equity. Dare County Schools plans to spend many Esser Fund dollars on SEL, including a universal screening tool. Universal meaning it screens every child, not just little Johnny who's flagged for falling asleep in class and we're worried about him. No, every Dare County child will be screened. There are two types. In the first type, minor children are asked to self-report on still-developing behaviors and emotions. But perhaps more scary is teachers, forced to evaluate each student on behaviors and emotions exhibited in only a classroom setting and score them. Those scores are then tied to student ID numbers, part of their permanent record, and resulting scores are then used to funnel students into three tiers for possible further intervention. This has nothing to do with ABCs and 1-2-3s. The ultimate goal: a continuing partnership between Health and Human Services and schools that extends well beyond COVID, in the form of telehealth and telepsych in school buildings. This partnership is called Project Aware, and it is already being piloted in six North Carolina counties. Indeed, lobbyist wives of highly-placed DPI staff have already received East Point contracts to provide these telehealth services. So let's see, telehealth in a school without parents present, based upon a child's self-report, or poor teachers forced to act as pseudo-psychologists? What could possibly go wrong? We implore you to help us fight this in Dare County Schools. Please get engaged, get educated on the matter, because this is happening on your watch. Let us help you. Stop relying, please, on prepackaged PowerPoint presentations from Dr. Farley, who gets marching orders with respect from NCDPI. True leadership and actual oversight at the county level have never been more important. We're asking tonight that Dare County Schools adopt a formal policy to provide families with an active opt-in form similar to the procedure used for field trips. If a field trip consent form is not signed, the child doesn't go. Likewise, if a universal screener consent form is not in hand, the child is not screened. I will provide you tonight with a sample from the Louisiana Department of Education that could serve as a template for this purpose, and it elucidates our expectations for an appropriate opt -- active opt-in letter for parents, because many of us simply don't consent. For more information on any of these topics, please visit daretoshareobx.org.
Thank you. Next, we have Thomas Serino. When you start --
Oh, when you start talking, it'll come on. Okay. I would like to thank all of you for committing to take a leadership position in the community as a Board of Education member. Thank you. Now, I'm not sure what your reasons were for joining. Some of them may have been to strengthen the school system. Let's hope that wasn't just to advance your career. There are many different types of leadership styles out there, but they all must be able to handle pressure while working to the best solution. The tricky part to handle stress is you must be -- work very hard to educate yourself in what you're dealing with, every one of you. If you're receiving an email, it doesn't mean that you're supposed to forward it to Superintendent Farley to answer your questions. He is your subordinate. He works for you. You have the responsibility to everyone that sends you an email to do your own homework and reply back to them in person. If you're going to have someone else answer your questions, then all you're doing is rubber-stamping it. It doesn't make any sense. What are you doing here, then? That is not an example of leadership. Something strange we've also noticed recently is all these special session, two-hour, closed-door meetings. Doesn't that seem a little strange considering that you work for the public? Especially when most of you are extremely quiet during these meetings, like as if you've been burnt out in the last two hours. There's plenty to cover here. Now, leaders don't hide behind closed doors. Another very important attribute to leadership is attendance. Susan Bothwell, David Twitty, I understand you were absent last meeting, I hope everything's okay, but while you were gone, your teammate, Maryam Ballas, decided to move on forward without you. She voted on 42, 31, 50, 21, 72, 63, whatever goes on, but the type of masked children she strapped to their face, they marched on without you? That means up to almost 28% of Dare County citizens were voiceless without you with her leadership. Maryam Ballas, all the citizens of Dare County, you owe all the Dare County citizens an explanation why you proceeded to hear the hearing without your teammates. You could have easily called in. You called in for yourself. As a leader of your team, you should have allowed them. And now, you also accidentally confused them into thinking they were voting for the monthly state-required mandate mask vote. Most of them didn't know what they were voting for. They thought it was planted in. Now, Joe Toddler, Carl Woody, we really appreciate you guys stepping up and trying to say, "Slow the brake, pump the brakes, we want to learn a little more." So we're asking that the Board only takes a vote when every district can be represented correctly in public. You can find all the supporting materials to these topics you are voting on each meeting at GoToShare.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Serino. Next, we have George Carver.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm George Carver. I'm going to keep it short and sweet. Knowledge is power. This is one of the first meetings I'm attending, so... Knowledge is power, and I'm representing Dare Minority Coalition. And first of all, I definitely want to give respect to the teachers of Dare County, and not just only Dare County, but throughout our country. Because far as like putting our time and money behind the politicians, the teachers are the ones should be getting this money and representing us as a whole far as raising our kids. But I will come back to that as a whole. From my understanding, our base have made a decision not to teach the Black history like it should be taught in our schools. Like I said, knowledge is power. For one, y'all have not been taught this knowledge, so therefore, y'all might feel like it could be skipped. But Dare County, once again, I'm going to keep it straight to the point, because I have a lot on my plate than, as you see what I am and what I represent, but I represent much more than what you see. Dare County, far as being, and I'm saying having the first birth of Virginia Dare, and I'm saying making a mass pool of economic development, resources, money, based on their history development, is not going to teach Black history? Guys, y'all tarnishing Dare County, period, by making us decisions such as this. I'm going to move forward. When people have, I'm saying have voted and put people far as representing them in a position, such as the gentleman just left the stage earlier made a very clear statement about that. Look, if y'all are not going to represent us as a whole, I'm saying, if we can't put invaders, I'm sorry, innovators, doctors, engineers, and also farmers, and at the top of the list always fills, teachers, to represent us and our kids for the future generation? The politician, hey, listen, the politician is, hey, y'all wasting our time and our money. Know what I mean? So move to the side. But I'm going to keep it, I want to keep it real sweet and definitely understandable coming from my point of view. And I don't want to get too much in detail, because I'm at 15 seconds. But peace, love, and happiness, coming from Dare Minority Coalition. I know you individuals got your own things going, but at the same time, speaking to the community, if y'all want something more, better for your kids to represent outside of...
Thank you, Mr. Carver. Your time's up. Thank you.
DareMinorityCoalition.com.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brewer, would you please put your mask up for me? Thank you. Radasha Gregory. Ms. Gregory?
I'm sorry?
You ready?
Hold on, pulling up my... Hello, how are y'all today? There are a lot of titles that make...
Can you hold the mic, please?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry.
All right, my name is Radasha Gregory. There are a lot of titles that make me who I am. I am a mother, I'm a daughter, and a sister and a friend. I am American. It's disappointing to me that we have to have a meeting to discuss whether or not all American history should be taught in our schools. We teach the history of the Revolutionary War and the Civil Wars. We teach the history of World War I and II. We teach American history. We shy away from teaching the story of Freedman's Colony, and we shy away from teaching the history of Civil Rights Movement. We shy away from teaching the histories of Indigenous and Black people. We shy away from the way systemic injustices have impacted and continue to impact the larger society of this community. But it is a part of our histories. We are American. In our community, we have a population that is Black, White, Latina, and Mexican. Our population is biracial. My child is in first grade. One of his classmates was approached a group of boys to play. This student is biracial, and the other students were white. This is first grade. When the biracial student went over to play, the other students told him he couldn't play with them because he was the N-word. This happened this year. We are American. It can be difficult to talk about race if you've never had to talk about race before. Some of us are confronted with race every day. We have had to learn how to move about in a world where we are not inherently safe. It doesn't matter if you are home, work, or at school, where just last year, the "go-home niggers" was spray-painted on the children's locker in Dare County. Some of us have no choice but to teach our children about race because of the lessons we are learning about race from their peers in school. It doesn't matter if the student is five or 15. The construction of race is being taught at home. The school system has the responsibility of creating and learning, a learning environment that destabilizes the systemic injustices present in our school systems and sadly are often being reinforced at home. We are American. Teaching only parts of American history that make white people feel good leads us to untruth about who we are as people and the community and move us further away.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Your time is up. Thank you. Sarah Close. Sarah Close? Did I say that right? Thank you.
My name is Sarah Close, and I have a 16-year-old son who attends Manio High School. I've lived on the Outer Banks for about 12 years. I have a degree in Journalism from the University of Wisconsin with minors in Sociology and Latin American Studies and an emphasis on race and ethnic relations. I mentioned this last part just to let you know that I take education and factual information very seriously. First, I'd like to acknowledge the teachers, assistants, support teams, who've been shapeshifters and hoop jumpers for the last two years in order to keep our kids moving forward in their They don't get nearly the respect or pay they deserve, and I for one would like to thank them. In the years that I've lived here, I've watched this community come together to help their neighbors in so many ways. Through hurricanes, cancer, house fires, and car accidents, there are fundraisers and meal trains, people pitching in where and when they can. I see the issue of wearing a mask as no different. September 24th, the CDC reported that studies found that school districts without a universal mask policy in place were more likely to have COVID outbreaks. Nationwide counties without masking requirements saw the number of pediatric COVID cases increase nearly twice as quickly during this same time period. On October 8th, Duke posted on their site that a masking mandate in North Carolina schools during the early weeks of the Delta variant surge resulted in lower rates of infection among schoolchildren and staff members than what was reported in the broader community. February 21st of this year, the NIH determined that the few existing studies suggested that surgical and cloth masks did not significantly compromise ventilation and oxygen supplies in healthy individuals and may therefore be considered as not harmful. These are real and credible sources. We have an opportunity here as parents and teachers, as public servants, to put into practical use the various subjects that we teach in school: science, math, and statistics, and to use this information to make educated decisions and continue to wear masks in school. Speaking of schools, subjects, I'd like to take another moment quickly to address critical race theory. I know, as I'm sure all of you know, that this type of curriculum is not taught at the K through 12 level. I'm disappointed to see how this non-issue is taking over and further dividing our school systems. That being said, I'm the mother of a Black child, a Black honor student who fully intends on, at minimum, obtaining a master's degree. It's imperative that we include Americans of color when we discuss scientific innovation--
Thank you. Your time is up, Ms. Close.
--math, art, and poetry in our classrooms.
Thank you. Gina Elko. Gina Elko.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak here. I'm gonna go over, I guess, a lot of numbers, and all of it comes from either CDC, FDA, or VAERS. The first information I'd like to share comes from the VAERS site, which was established in 1990, which is a government agency just like the others are, and it stands for Vaccine Adverse Effects Reporting System. So I want to do a little comparison between vaccines, between the COVID-19 vaccine and the flu vaccine. As far as the flu vaccines, over the past 25 years, total adverse events have been 193,712. Over the last 10 months, the COVID-19 vaccines, the adverse effects have been 856,919. As far as deaths, over the last 25 years with the flu vaccines, there's been a total of 1,996 deaths with the flu vaccine. In the last 10 months with the COVID-19 vaccines, there's been a total of 18,078 deaths. As far as a yearly average, the average yearly flu vaccine adverse events were 7,500, with 78 deaths per year of people that get the flu vaccine, and in less than a year, it's been 18,000. Next, I'd like to talk about the new five, age 5 to 11 vaccine that FDA and CDC have authorized and recommended through Pfizer Emergency Use. Pfizer provided safety data on only two studies cohorts of 5 to 11-year-olds. They studied one group for two months and another group for two and a half weeks. Pfizer says post-vaccination myocarditis and pericarditis in participants from age 5 to 12 years of age will not be studied until after the vaccine is authorized for children. On page 14 of the Pfizer paperwork submitted to FDA, they will be adding a medication called tromethaline, I'm sorry, tromethamine. Tromethamine is a blood acid reducer which used to stabilize patients with heart attacks. If you look at, Dr. Rubin of Harvard University said, "We're never going to learn how safe the vaccine is unless we start giving it," and that's just the way it goes. This scares me, and we have ads for vaccinating from the state, from North Carolina, and it says it's safe and effective. Children aged 12 to 24 account for 8.8% of vaccines, but they compromise, they comprise of 52% of all cases with myocarditis and pericarditis, according to VAERS. Myocarditis is permanent heart failure.
Thank you, Ms. Elko.
Thank you.
Reese Stetcher.
It's hard to express how frustrating it is to have an elected school board that allows Roy Cooper, Sheila Davies, Attorney Schwartz, and Dr. Farley to put money in politics ahead of our children. Our children do not need to be in masks. Medical doctor after medical doctor will tell you this. We're now up to 14 counties in the state that have gotten out of these ridiculous mask mandates. Union County has 17,000 students that are just fine and dandy since dumping the mask three months ago. Dare County has 5,200 students. There are less cases now than there were back in August 5th, when you did the right thing and voted for parental choice. You guys said in September, when you let appointees Davies and Farley scare you out of doing your job, that you would revote on parental choice every month subsequent. You have not. I remind you for the umpteenth time that you guys were elected. You folks were elected to represent the folks that elected you. The folks that want kids to stay in masks for attorneys did not elect six of you. You keep surrendering your, surrendering your elected power to these folks. It's coming. The appointees are going to try to strong-arm you in allowing the California vaccine mandates for 5 and 11-year-olds that we were just talking about. And I'm gonna touch on a briefly, contrary to what we were told, social-emotional learning is critical race theory, and it is in Dare County. Roy Cooper and Dr. Farley snuck it in with the ESAR fund money and are in the process of rolling it out. Reading, writing, and arithmetic is not who's been hired. Interventionists, screeners have been hired. Kate already spoke about that. These indoctrination screenings could be fixed with a vote on mandatory parental permission slips. Kate has done the homework for y'all on that, and you need to look over the Louisiana, the Louisiana parental consent form, because I sure as heck don't want my daughter being screened on something that has nothing to do with reading, writing, and arithmetic. So for starters, you could do that. Second, you could make a motion and do what you said you were gonna do back in September and vote to bring back parental, parental choice on masks. You guys said you would rehash that every month, and you have not done it. You could also make a motion and vote that parents are allowed more than five minutes of public comment, as we are allowed five minutes at the commissioner meetings. You could make a motion and vote to recall the screeners that Farley is hiring and pretending are teachers that are going to be indoctrinating our kids with social-emotional learning. You could redirect that towards more monies, raises for you teachers that deserve raises, and work on reading, writing, and arithmetic. And you could help out with semester curricular activities. You could also make a motion and vote that Dare County schools will not allow the vaccine mandates for our children based on the real science that says that the least likely segment of the population to die are our kids.
Stetcher.
To relieve Dr. Farley of his duties--
Thank you, Mr. Stetcher. Your time is done.
--and find somebody--
Thank you, Mr. Stetcher.
--that will put our children--
Keith, I understand we have some emails that came in. Is that right?
Testing one, two. All right, thank you, Aaron. I think we can go down on the gain a little bit more on that channel. Testing one, two. That sounds good. Madam, sure, we did have a couple of comments that came in through the, were submitted via email to me, and so I'll read these in the order that they were received. The first comment is from Lauren Zaritsky, and I think we'll go down just a little bit more on that channel on the gain, Aaron. I think that's good right there. Thank you. "Here we are again. I'm sure you are all tired. I'm tired. COVID fatigue is real and depressing. It feels like this is never-ending, and the monthly meetings that feel like monthly battles. It's enough to make you throw your hands up and say, 'Fine, whatever,' but that's not the right thing to do. We are all here because we care about our children and want the best possible outcome for them. We want them to be in school and in person as much as possible. The quarantine guidelines have not changed significantly enough to allow us to change course and make wearing a mask optional. There is measurable proof that wearing a mask works and that more children remain in face-to-face learning than they did when wearing it was optional. What are we, what we are doing is working. I respect parental choice on most matters, but not when one person's choice impacts the entire classroom. One parent's personal choice should not impact another's education. Please don't take your foot off the gas pedal. Our children are thriving and happy. I respectfully ask that you continue to support mandatory masking in schools. Thank you. Thank you also for allowing me to submit this to be read. As a working parent, I can't make these meetings, but I am very interested and invested in the outcome." The next comment is from Andrea, excuse me, the next comment here is from Edith Rowe. Edith says, let me just make sure I have the right comment here. Yep. Edith said, "Hello, Keith. I want to make a public comment for the school board meeting. The board has faced tremendous criticism in recent months. I wanted to tell you that I feel badly for that and want you to know that many parents greatly appreciate the hard work and difficult decisions that have been made by this board. Many of us are grateful that you are doing the best you can to keep our kids safe and in school this year. Please keep up the good work. Thank you." The next comment is from Denise Turner. "Good afternoon. I would love to be able to say this in person, however, I cannot be in attendance today. I wanted to say a huge thank you to Dare County Schools Administration, our teachers, cafeteria staff, custodians, and Board of Education. On behalf of Dare County parents, who are extremely grateful for our children to be able to attend school in person and safely. Teachers, the amount of work your staff has accomplished during this period of unpredictable events has been outstanding. You all need to know that your blood, sweat, and tears have not gone unnoticed. To our administrators and board, we recognize that many of your decisions have been criticized based on your experiences or have deepened on the state mandates and policies. We appreciate and hope the decisions made here have and will only be made to help our children and provide them an education without interference in the future. Thank you for your time, Denise Turner." The next comment is from Heidi Hess. Here we go. "First, I want to thank the amazing staff at Kitty Hawk Elementary School. My husband and I homeschooled our children for the first two months of school in an effort to provide a consistent schooling environment because we were concerned that without a mask requirement, we would be faced with quarantines and possibly even a return to virtual learning. Once the board voted at the last meeting to keep the mask requirement once again, we decided to re-enroll our children at Kitty Hawk. Their teacher and the administration welcomed them back with open arms, working quickly to re-enroll them and get them back into the classroom. I can imagine re-enrolling them was disruptive to the teacher and staff's regular schedule, but not once did they express that it was annoyance or provide any judgment at all. Although homeschooling was indeed the best choice for our family at that time, my kids and my husband and I are thrilled to be back at Kitty Hawk. Second, I want to urge the board to please vote today to heed the advice of public health officials and keep the mask requirement. Although I personally hope our kids won't need to be wearing masks at school too much longer, I do think it's premature to remove the mask requirement at this time. With vaccines on the way for younger kids, the holidays around the corner, and infection and quarantine numbers finally starting to come down, I'd like to see the mask requirement in place for just a bit longer. Please let all our children have the best chance at a consistent learning environment and a normal, healthy holiday season. Thank you, Heidi Hess." The next comment is from Katie Brewer. "As a parent of a Dare County student, I wanted to send a message of gratitude to all of the teachers, staff, and administrators across the district. The pandemic has required an immense amount of resiliency and flexibility, and I want you to know that your hard work has not gone unseen. We have some of the most amazing teachers here in Dare County, and I cannot thank you enough for showing up every day for our students. In our small community, we run into teachers and staff members outside of school constantly, and the way my child's face lights up when this happens just really speaks volumes. I would also like to thank Dr. Farley and his team, who have worked extremely hard to roll out and maintain educational programs that my family has personally benefited from: the Dual Immersion Language Program, the Free Meals Program, and the Summer Bridge Program, just to name a few. I truly believe that this work you do has shaped a unique educational experience for the students of Dare County, and it is a privilege to be a part of the DCS community. The second comment is from Jerry Cook. Or the next comment, excuse me. "To the school board for citizens' comments. Do you have legal authority to require a written exemption for medical reasons for anyone not wearing a mask? This appears to violate several statutes, including HIPAA. Are y'all attempting to create a riot by verbally silencing parents desiring to speak at regular board meetings? I recommend you individually research laws as well as question whatever person or persons that are leading you into situations that could possibly resort to you being criminally charged, which then opens up the legality of you being responsible for restorations under civil charges. My further advice to you all is to resign as members of this board, as you obviously do not represent the best interest of the children. P.S. The CDC used to have at least 10 studies showing the wearing of a mask, breathing restrictions, were ineffective against disease-causing pathogens, with studies, random control trials dating from the 1940s through 2018, which the CDC removed from their website last year. If you decide to remain a school board member, it is highly suggested that you question what I'm stating, what you are being told by your chairperson, by Sheila Davies, the governor's office, and especially what you hear or see on mainstream media. I believe that was what you were elected to do. Best of luck going forward, as you all are in for a bumpy ride, it appears. Gerald R. Cook, Dare County Concerned Citizen." The next comment is from Maggie Bryson. "As a parent of both high school and middle school students, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank our school system. Teachers, administrators, and support staff have all taken what can only be considered an almost impossible set of challenges and continued without accepting defeat-- an almost impossible set of challenges and continued without accepting defeat to educate our children. From remote schooling to hybrid schooling, to the endless guessing game of how best to progress forward without knowing what will, tomorrow will bring, not to mention the regular day, daily challenges of being a public school teacher in 2021. I thank them all enough for their ongoing dedication. I want to highlight a couple of tools that have been implemented that I genuinely appreciate. First Light Middle School's use of the No Nonsense Nursing Program has given students clear and concise expectations and a framework for repercussions that should be commended. This program ensures that each student starts fresh each day, something we all need. I would also like to thank the First Light High School teachers for striving to touch base with parents for positive reasons. It is especially nice as our students get older and their education becomes more independent to have this open moment of communication with their teachers, who we more and more frequently don't know personally. I believe this level of accessibility is much appreciated, and the positive reinforcement is encouraging. As a side note, my thanks to every teacher that has consistently updated grades and assignments in Power School, as it makes our ability to motivate our students much easier when we know the status of assignments. I would also like to briefly acknowledge Diane Childress, the principal at First Light Middle School. Under her direction, the building is a more positive, brighter, and far more welcoming school. She continues to bring strong teachers and leadership into that building. I just want to thank her for everything she has done there. I appreciate that we as parents may at times bring, seem to bring forward nothing but critique and complaint, but I for one genuinely appreciate the level of dedication, hard work, and heart that our teachers, administrators, and staff bring each and every day. We all stress about what is in people's lives. We hyper-focus on our individual opinions and concerns. It is inspiring that our administrators and teachers are able to balance their individual concerns and opinions with the health and well-being of each of our students and their educational needs. Thank you for all you do. All right, I'm gonna grab a drink of water here for a second. I hope that camera angle wasn't too unflattering, Erin, as I drank water from the podium. Here we go. Our next comment is from Colleen Worth. I want to start off by thanking the Dare County School staff for the wonderful job they are doing. I will also want to thank the board for implementing the mask policy. It is my hope that the board will continue with the mask policy as it is definitely helping to keep our kids and DCS staff safe and out of quarantine. Erin, let's try muting Channel 7, and let's just see if that would help some of this feedback up here. All right, thank you, Erin. Erin's doing his 10th job simultaneously tonight. Thank you, Erin. All right, let's see here. Our next comment is from Michelle Young. My family is grateful that the schools have reopened and students are wearing masks for everyone's safety as we navigate this pandemic. Having the kids back in school is critical for so many reasons that Dr. Farley and Sheila Davies have mentioned, mental health among them. We should keep our kids wearing masks through the winter to mitigate the spread of Covid and ensure that our schools can remain open. A big shout out to John Buford, who wears multiple hats at First Light High School for the Fall Chorus Concert. The kids sing beautifully and in mass. Thank you. Michelle Young, strong. All right here, let's make this just a little bit bigger. Here we go. The next comment is from Michelle Cimento. As a parent of a child in 7th grade at Mania Middle School, I support the practice of our students wearing masks. It has been brought to my attention that many, at least half of my son's peers, are not wearing masks properly over their nose and their mouth while in school. It must be very difficult for the teachers to be mask police while trying to educate our children. I urge the board to encourage parents to discuss the importance of mask wearing with their children for the safety of the others. This issue is bigger than Dare County politics. The World Health Organization, U N I C E F, and the CDC, Johns Hopkins, and closer-to-home Duke Health continue to recommend mask wearing for everyone 12 years and older when a distance of more than three feet cannot be maintained. There are intelligent people whose guidelines and recommendations we should follow. Available for less than $2 on Amazon are clear, plastic, comfortable masks that allow teachers and students to see each other for learning pronunciation. They allow the skin to breathe, as so to not aggravate acne or other skin conditions. They allow much improved breathing because the plastic sits away from the mouth. They can be cleaned with soap and water and dried with a paper towel. The country has come a long way in the last year and a half as to what masks are available. Mask wearing in school doesn't have to be the struggle it used to be. During the holiday season, many of us will travel more and be exposed to family and friends who currently are not in our inner circles. Therefore, November, December, and January will likely see a spike in Covid cases. The mask mandate in school can reduce the number of cases and possibly save the life of a student's compromised relative. I like to think that if I asked someone to wear a mask in order to save my child's grandmother suffering with kidney disease, they would do so without question. That's what I'm asking, that is what I am doing here now. To many of us, love an unhealthy person who is not just a number and who we don't want to become a statistic. If wearing a mask reduces that risk, even an infinitesimal amount, I support it. Thank you for hearing my comment. The next comment is from Lynn Flowers. Thank you to all the teachers, staff, and board members that are working hard to keep our students in school and out of quarantine. The mask has proven to be a great tool in making that happen. Please keep the mask mandate and keep our students in school. I have two kids, 7th and 10th grade. Neither one of my children have any issue or problem wearing the mask. They want to stay face-to-face learning. The next comment is from Jamie Wegener. My name is Jamie Wegener, Dare County parent and resident. I'm reaching out to thank you and your team for helping lead our students and staff members to health and safety, given the climate of all things considered over this year and beyond. Thankful that Sheila Davies has had a significant role in this peculiar time alongside all. Appreciate the efforts during this bottomless pivoting and the overall conditions. Best and my many thanks. The next comment is from Reverend David Morris. We are writing to express our concern as parents of a DCS student, as local citizens, and as religious leaders about efforts by some to advance the false claim that critical race theory is being taught in our schools and possesses a threat of some kind. Our children must be taught the honest history of this country and all its citizens, including those who have not always been treated as full citizens or even as fully human beings over the years. There have been struggles for centuries to realize the promise our flawed founders wove into the fabric of our nation. Our children need to know about the flaws as well as the virtues, the tragedies as well as the triumphs, and the injustices as well as the movement toward justice. The honest history of race and power in America is painful, but it is also inspiring and hopeful. Erasing the reality that some in our nation have had to rise against incredible odds that were intentionally placed in their way is just not acceptable to us. It's been said that the people who throw rocks at ruby bridges don't want their grandchildren learning that someone threw those rocks. Nothing can be healed and made better if we try to pretend it did not happen. We call you and the whole Board of Education to stand firm against any attempt to teach dishonest, sanitized fairy tales instead of the real, hard, proud history that is still unfolding today. Sincerely, Reverend David Morris. The next comment is from Jana Horn. Hello, I would like to sincerely thank the board for their continued efforts in protecting the health and safety of our children and our community. Being a family which includes several immune-suppressed individuals, we understand the importance of masks and the scientifically proven fact that they protect against the spread of illness. I applaud your continued efforts in the face of unreasonable and unfounded opposition. If we could all show such selfless care and concern for the welfare of others, this would be a far better world to live in. Thank you kindly. Next comment is from Tammy Gray. What a tough couple of years we have had. I would like to just take this opportunity to say how grateful I am to the teachers, staff, and school board members. None of the choices we have had to make have been easy. All of us have had our opinions, concerns, and beliefs heard and argued. We will never know what would have been the perfect solution. However, the board has done their absolute best to protect our children and gone through every measure possible to ensure everyone was safe. The masking has been somewhat aggravating, trying to remember them every day, and the children frequently complaining about not having enough mask-free time at school. But with the risk, I understand that things just need to be the way they are for now. The new normal is just something we have to deal with. I am grateful for our entire team of professionals here on the Outer Banks and thankful we are all just the best for the children. Most of us here on Hatteras Island are willing to do whatever we need to do for our kids to have the most normal life possible during these trying times. Thanks, Tammy Gray. The next comment is from Jamie Varnell. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Farley, Sandy Kendall, Dr. Keith Parker, Johanna Parker, all of the central office staff, and all of the DCS teachers and staff. You have been put through the wringer these past few years, and you have handled yourselves with nothing but grace and love for our kids. Every time I tune into these board meetings, I am appalled at the lack of respect being shown to our administration and to, at times, the Board of Education itself. Ranging from misinformation to personal attacks, these comments are cringe-worthy displays, accomplish nothing productive, and only work to seed discord and contempt. What is most telling is that these comments often come from those without children in our school system, which is completely mind-blowing. If you have been paying attention to what is actually happening in our schools, you would see an administration striving to bring the best opportunities to our children, an administration who knows the world is large and diverse and is changing quickly, and our students deserve the best shot at thriving in it. As I mentioned earlier, my oldest children are in the Dual Language Immersion Program at Kitty Hawk. I cannot tell you enough how impressed I am with the program as a whole, but I am especially impressed with the teachers and staff working so hard to make this program a success. Not only do my kids feel comfortable having conversations with Spanish-speaking adults outside of the school setting, which in and out of itself is just incredible at their ages, but their worldview is so broad. They are learning about worlds outside of their own. They are learning that this planet is full of people who speak a different native language than them, people who look different, people who celebrate different holidays, people who carry different sets of beliefs. This is amazing. There isn't a week that goes by where they don't teach me something new about this world. It is incredible opportunity, and we are all so grateful to be a part of it. In a similar vein, SEL has been a tremendously successful addition to my elementary kid's daily routine. Covid forced us into a year and a half of chaos and change and very little social contact. Having the time each day where they learn coping techniques and new and effective ways to express their emotions and actually discuss their feelings and turmoil has been game-changing in our house. Having someone acknowledge your feelings and give you methods to work through them is an incredible gift at any age, but especially for our young children and especially after these last couple of years. My eldest daughter is seven, and she is bringing home the tools and teachings from Ms. Harrocks to help our four-year-old manage her emotions. I know through conversations that many parents have had the pleasure of watching similar events unfold, but I am not sure how often we take time to say thank you. After listening to the horrendous and extremely misinformed comments coming from a small group of angry community members, I felt it was long past time to draw attention to just a... The next comment is from Wayne Heath. Good evening. Our Covid numbers look great. Please keep the mask and keep our kids in school. Thank you. Next comment is from Molly Garavito. Excuse me. Thank you to our teachers and school administrators for your kindness, strength, and perseverance throughout this year. We in Dare County are not sheltered from what is happening in this pandemic. As vaccinations are just becoming available for children five through 11 years old, the holidays just around the corner, and hopefulness for our families to travel and spend them together, we need to allow time for vaccinations to take effect prior to the full removal of masks in schools. In the midst of flu vaccinations and Covid vaccinations, many local physicians are recommending waiting several weeks between the shots to allow the body time to heal. Please take this into consideration as well. No one wants to spend the holidays in quarantine, or worse yet, battling the serious disease, spreading it to family members. The parents and guardians who are asking for continued mask use are not asking for this because we all enjoy wearing masks. We are asking for this because it works and it helps to keep our children and others safe until families have the opportunity to fully vaccinate their children. Please continue masks in schools. Thank you. The next comment is from Thad Ospand. In quotations, "What each individual wields is obstructed by everyone else, and what emerges is something that no one wielded." End quote. Frederick Engels. Quotations, "In no society have all regions and all parts of the population developed equally." End quote. Fernand Braudel. Quote, "I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin but by the content of their character." End quote. Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. I think that both sides have shared intentions for young people, understanding empathy, success, respect, equal footing. I disagree, however, that teaching critical race theory would be a useful tool, especially in grade school, to achieve such aims. To make sure we understand one another, I define CRT as the study of how laws, society, and institutions have caused disparities of outcome for racial groups. CRT, by considering everything through a racial lens, minimizes important factors other than racism. The result in differences in outcomes. It oversimplifies a complicated and unjust world, framing interactions through a modified Marxist based on a struggle of race rather than class. The shared origin of Marxism and CRT, called Critical Race Theory, is cause for concern. Marxism has never brought about outstanding empathy, equality, and respect, and I don't expect this kindred philosophy to either. Arguments brought against this theory are dismissed without justification. When CRT is challenged, its detractors are ridiculed, called racist, ignorant, not an ally. This causes resentment and division, consequences that one would hope our children might avoid. I see the divisiveness and anger that adults revel in while discussing CRT and other important but charred topics. The only way I see this being accepted in the classroom is through silencing those who object, through shame, indoctrination, and power, not education and exchange of ideas. I think there is a place in higher education for this advanced theory to be explored. The work of activists and watchdogs who continue to fight for fairness and justice may find it useful to study causes of disparities, racially intended or not. But kids need to develop the tools to be effective communicators first. Simply teaching the golden rule would be more beneficial. I don't think children today need to be taught to resent the very institutions in this country that they must accept and enter in in order to succeed in this world. I think instilling the distrust is counterproductive for students to excel. They can't bring about peaceful change through the system without being a part of it. They shouldn't be taught to reject mediocrity and colorblindness. The next comment is from Natalie Dutte. I am grateful to the Board of Education, the teachers and administrators, and the parents who work and volunteer their time. I applaud your collective efforts to shape our tiny humans, and not-so-tiny-humans, into amazing individuals, filled with love, compassion for others, and a desire to do their best in a very complicated world, not so that it serves them well but benefits and serves the greater good of everyone. Society as defined by the Oxford Dictionary is the aggregate of people living together in a more or less ordered community. If there's anything we should have learned over the past two years, it's that we all need to learn to get along and respect one another, just like they teach in school. We can have different opinions, that's freedom, but no one should feel the entitlement to yell and shout and shove opposing views down each other's throats. Instead, this crosses a line, is disrespectful and not part of freedom. And it's certainly not the purpose of these Board of Education meetings. Our children are developing Our children are developing and learning at a pace not all of us can keep up with. It's the very reason we have registered for our children to be in public schools, rather than to go to private or homeschool ourselves. In doing so, by signing up for Dare County Schools, we are opting to trust these amazing individuals, the teachers, the administration, and the Board of Education to handle the very education our children receive. I empower the Board to please vote today to keep the mask mandate in place. Do I think masks work? I'm not entirely convinced. Does wearing them keep our children in school? It certainly does. I thank you for voting to keep them in place as the less disruptive option for our children to keep them in school. Thank you." Okay, the next comment is from Dr. Michelle Lewis. "I'm sorry that I'm not with you all in person. I'm currently a candidate for United States Senate here in North Carolina, and I am at a campaign event tonight. I applaud you all for being here tonight to engage in what I hope is fruitful dialogue. As a pastor and a follower of Christ, I feel it necessary to start with Scripture. In Mark 3:25, Jesus says, 'A house divided against itself cannot stand.' It is a reminder for us to come together as people. We promote division when we hide the stories of the most marginalized in our communities. We occupy land once inhabited by indigenous people. The fact that just this year, people became angered and incensed over the portrayal of Native Americans in the lost colony by, wait for it, actual Native Americans, shows us just how much work there remains for us to do and the necessity of teaching all of our stories using culturally relevant teaching styles. Will teaching unedited histories in our classrooms make some uncomfortable? Absolutely. Will talking about race make some uncomfortable? Absolutely. Culturally relevant teaching in schools keeps us from repeating the sins of our past. There is a myth in popular culture that young children are colorblind or don't notice race. By this logic, children are blank slates who cannot develop racial prejudices until they are explicitly taught to do so. This leads many adults to argue that we should not discuss race with children because they are too young, and even mentioning race will put ideas in their heads or poison their minds. When young people talk about race or express any bias, it's often dismissed. She doesn't know what she's saying, blamed on parents or other adults. Someone must have said that at home, or only indirectly addressed as general bad behavior. We don't say things like that because it hurts people's feelings. However, current psychological research suggests this approach is all wrong. In fact, research clues shows that children not only recognize race from a very young age, but also develop racial biases by ages three to five that do not necessarily resemble the racial attitudes of adults in their homes. Our school system is ranked fourth in the state with some of the hardest-working and most dedicated teachers. Our students have a desire to learn because they want to be more productive members of our society. We are giving them the best opportunities when we teach them not to fear conversations about race. We are teaching them that race doesn't have to continue to be one of the things that divides us. Culturally relevant teaching in our schools will help us to erase the divisions that exist between us because a house, a community, a school, or a nation divided against itself cannot stand." The next comment is from Vanzola McMurran. "My question is, can American history be required..." Excuse me, let me restart over. "My question is, can African-American history be a requirement to graduate from Dare County Schools, just like US history is a requirement? Thanks." The next comment is from Olivia Sugg. "As students at First Flight High School influenced directly by decisions of the Dare County School Board, my peers and I would like to make a public comment at tonight's meeting. We would like to express our opinions on having a mask mandate in place at our high school. We believe that it would not be prudent to remove the mask mandate at this time as the holidays are fast approaching. Many of us already have plans in place to travel this holiday season to visit family members of all ages, including those most susceptible to complications due to COVID-19. With that being said, we understand that the number of local COVID cases is currently on the decline, but believe that it directly correlates to the fact that masks are required in..." "We think that a better time to reevaluate this decision would be after winter break for the start of the second semester, especially now that Europe's fourth COVID wave has begun and our country's trends have mirrored theirs in the past. Thank you for valuing our opinions as Dare County students. We hope that you will take our suggestions into account because we are the ones, along with our teachers, being directly affected by these decisions. Signed, Olivia Sugg, Foster Guns, Kayla Lovelace, Isabella Sabora, Emma Snow, and Haley Redonia." And Aaron, I think we're going to run low on our batteries, so if you want to switch out to that other wireless mic, that'd be great.
Aaron's going to want a pay raise after tonight.
Everybody give Aaron another hand clap. All right, there we go. And I want to say again for the 10th time, I don't know what I would do without Aaron right now. Aaron, you really are coming through tonight. I appreciate this. All right, here we go. The next comment in, and I think we might have to go down on the gain on this new channel too, Aaron. All right, the next comment here is from Dawn Powers. "Thank you for your tireless commitment to the betterment of Dare County Schools. My elementary-age son and middle-school daughter are relatively new to the system after years at the Montessori school. They have transitioned beautifully thanks to the dedicated teachers and administrators they have had the privilege of engaging with in person and on digital platforms. I know we are all weary of the constraints the virus has placed in our midst, but every challenge can be met and overcome when we pool our resources, our strength, and our hope and forge ahead together for the common good. I can also understand that it can be tempting to get swept away by the incendiary comments and disproportionate responses of some, but I thank you in advance for allowing reason and civility to remain at the heart of our work. Our children are not suffering as some loud voices proclaim. Our children have proven to be resilient, capable, and flexible in the face of difficulty, all attributes that will continue to serve them well all of the days of their life, excuse me, all of the days of their long, hopeful, happy, and healthy lives. Thank you for continuing to put the health and safety of our children and our community at large at the forefront of your discussions and discernment. Gratefully, Dawn." The next comment is from Jessica Kerber. "I grew up in Dare County going to Dare County Schools. My mom retired as a Dare County School teacher. I am proud to be raising my girls in this county and the educational opportunities that are available to them. We started with First Flight Elementary School, and the love and support were received from everyone I am eternally grateful for. Unfortunately, a pandemic put that to a halt for them, and uncertainty made me homeschool them last year. That uncertainty put into perspective how hard the teachers, staff, and administration works to provide a community-based learning environment for them. With my mom being a teacher, I was aware of the dedication she put into her position, but I really didn't know how hard it was until I was put into the driver's seat. With two students, not hundreds, I would personally like to recognize the outstanding efforts of all of the teachers, staff, and administrators of First Flight Elementary School. Now we are at First Flight Middle School, virtually, and yes, it is still hard. I still sit down with them for every lesson and be their teacher assistant because, as a parent, it is my responsibility to make sure they are learning, whether in the classroom or not. This new platform was not easy to navigate at first for any of us. Elaine Marion received many emails with me in a panic, but if she didn't know the answer, she found out for me. Isn't this a lifelong lesson? We would be teaching our children how to deal with uncertainty, how to communicate, how to live First Flight Elementary School's KS-CRP way, how to be a community, how to support one another, and how to stand up for your beliefs in a respectful way. In closing, I would like to thank the Board and Superintendent for offering optional opportunities for education. No matter your stance on the situation, we were given options to choose from that best suited our family's needs. Jessica Kerber." The next comment is from Joe O'Grady. "We are almost there. I'd like to recommend the county keep the mask mandate in place until a majority of our children receive their second COVID-19 vaccination shots. Surf Pediatrics is offering vaccinations this Saturday by appointment for five-to-11-year-olds. Not sure about their availability at this point, but we have appointments scheduled for our $2. Thanks for this opportunity to comment, Joe O'Grady, Kitty Hawk Elementary School parent." Catherine Heath submitted a comment that says, "A child is a gift from God, not a guinea pig." Matt Brower. "Please find the following public comments for the Board. I regret that I cannot attend personally regarding the mask policy in Toolkit. I have made the points in previous Board meetings that there is not any conclusive evidence that cloth and surgical masks are effective in stopping the spread of respiratory viruses and that children are not at significant risk from COVID-19. I cited several authoritative studies that indicate children are not drivers of community transmission of COVID-19. Furthermore, very few of the breakthrough cases in Dare County have resulted in hospitalization or serious illness for vaccinated people. Since Union County opted out of the strong schools North Carolina Toolkit recommended by NCDHHS, the number of positive cases in that school system has declined, which may indicate that the masks are not particularly effective in a school setting. I have requested that Dr. Davies provide the Board with data on the children who were quarantined at the beginning of the school year since the quarantine policy seems to have been the leading factor behind the Board making masks mandatory in September, against the wishes of the parents and DCS staff. It is relevant to know how many of the quarantined students in the first two weeks of the school year tested positive for COVID-19 after being denied school access. This would help craft responsible COVID policies that are not one-size-fits-all, arbitrary templates from the CDC and NCDHHS. Perhaps Dr. Davies will have that information tonight so that a more reasonable quarantine policy can be implemented. This is a small community, and there is a growing amount of discontent among the parents and staff at Dare County Schools concerning the Board and administration. Perhaps Dr. Farley should poll the staff and parents again as he did before the start of the school year. I would recommend that the poll be more comprehensive than the previous poll because the level of dissatisfaction with DCS is not sustainable. Matt Brower, Southern Shores." The next comment is from Ivy Ingram. "Good evening, Dare County Board of Education and Dr. Farley. I am writing to you today to express my utmost appreciation for the guidance of the staff at First Flight High School. My oldest child is a senior, and as her Dare County School years come to an end after almost 13 years, I am reminded of all the amazing teachers she has experienced. This year specifically, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Hamph, journalism teacher at First Flight High School who continually goes above and beyond to challenge and engage students. Additionally, Ms. Anderson, AP literature teacher, who has provided exceptional literature experiences this semester. And finally, Ms. White, guidance counselor who, despite losing the college coordinator at First Flight High School, has managed to guide my child through the college application process with ease. I am incredibly thankful for our DCS experiences, and in a time when it's easier to focus on the negative, I believe that is all the more reason to bring to light the positives happening in our schools each day. Thank you so much for your dedication to our children. Sincerely, Ivy Ingram, parent of a 12th and 6th grader at First Flight High School and First Flight Middle School." The next comment is from Liz Brower. "Good evening. To whomever had the idea to allow public comments to be shared ahead of time and read at the meeting, thank you. I cannot attend due to family obligations, but I do appreciate that my email will be read aloud. My husband and I are raising four children, all currently enrolled in three different Dare County Schools. I don't want to keep perseverating on the same things we have been since March of 2020. Tonight, I ask this Board to please start talking about education. I ask you to please allow teachers to use their training to assess students' needs and get the kids caught up on academics. There seems to be more time spent on emotional intervention." Yes, that was correct. "Meanwhile, the district's assessment scores dropped. The public schools are for education, not delivery of psychosocial services. I ask this Board to lead DCS in raising morale. Students, staff, and admin across all levels do not deny that morale is low. This can be changed. Would you consider a temporary local task force that supports and networks existing parent-teacher organizations in morale-building activities? I ask this Board to start working on retaining and recruiting quality teachers. We've lost some really great educators in Dare County Schools over the past two years, and from the numerous staff I've spoken to, there are going to be early retirements and more resignations of quality teachers. I ask this Board to please get serious on addressing the overcrowding at First Flight High School like the Nighthawk News covered on its most recent edition. With the increase in full-time residents, this challenge will not resolve itself. Even though we all have different opinions on how to get there, we are all involved with Dare County Schools because of the children, and we all want them to have better than we have and be better than we are. It's time to get back to education. Thank you, Liz Brower." Madam Chair, that concludes the comments that were submitted via email.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. I appreciate you reading all that. I know that was a lot. Thank you. I was, I think if we're going to take a quick five-minute recess, that lasted a little bit longer, so we will go into recess for five minutes. I'd like to call the meeting back into order. Do I need to note the time? At 7:54? Oh, well, there he is. Okay. Next up, we have announcements. Dr. Farley, will you share us in announcements?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll move swiftly. I know she had to step out because it was a death in the family, but I do want to publicly recognize Ms. Bass Knight, who's been a champion for education in Dare County and impacted thousands of students, parents, and staff. I want to thank Manny Elementary School, the wonderful staff, our administrative team for hosting tonight and your wonderful presentations, even though Curtis got a lot of mic time. Well done, Curtis. As you know, our schools and hatters have been closed the last two days due to inclement weather in Overwatch. Unfortunately, we will be able to reopen tomorrow. Thursday is Veterans Day, so we will not be in session in school. We want to recognize and celebrate our veterans, and I know we have a few veterans here, so if you want to stand, invite you to be recognized. We still do not have a state budget. In the last two announcements, our Emerging Leaders Program, we have 19 teachers who have joined our professional learning series. We're very pleased with that. And lastly, really cool news. If you're in grades three through five, every elementary school has an after-school Legos program that started this week, so pretty cool. That's all the announcements.
Thank you. And we also had the, how's the principal with the NC State?
Yes, so we're still in the process. NC State University is vetting candidates from Dare County, and we had 11 who applied.
Great. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda. It includes personnel consent agenda, minutes of the October 12th special and regular meeting, approval of a donation from Kitty Hawk Elementary School PTA.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Ms. Bothwell.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Woody. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have approved. Next, we have reports and items for information. Dr. Farley?
So I'm going to welcome Johanna Parker, Director of Innovation, to the lectern, and she's going to do a brief update and summary of our Ignite DCS Virtual Professional Learning Summit that we held about two weeks ago. Johanna?
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Johanna Parker. I serve as the Director of Innovation for Dare County Schools. I'm going to do a quick update for all of you about our Ignite Professional Learning Summit that took place on October 27th. First of all, what is Ignite? So a little backstory. Keith, I'm getting some. Thank you. So what is Ignite? So Ignite is a district initiative that we designed, the instructional team, all those wonderful people back there, raise your hands in the air, Ms. Flora, Holly King, Dr. Parker, Ms. Rita Roberts, to insta-fire staff to push beyond the ordinary, share knowledge, and personalize professional learning experiences. We are a county that, we are rural, so we are out far from everything. So every time we travel to PD, it's expensive for the district. It's a lot. So we wanted to capitalize on in-person professional learning and virtual professional learning for our staff and really look at the gifts and talents of our staff themselves and have them share. So how Ignite works is instructional staff choose what they want to learn about from a menu to better meet their needs. So we're not telling them exactly what to learn. We create a menu based off of needs, and then they choose what to learn, which is pretty awesome. School and teacher leaders apply to lead breakout sessions. We go through all the sessions. The instructional team and I decide what is going to be offered and what's going to best meet the needs. We started Ignite in the 2019-2020 school year, so right before COVID. Our last in-person event was actually February 19th, and then we had to go remote a month later. So staff really wanted more choice. So in order to do that, we created Ignite. All right, so the 27th. So on October 27th, we restarted Ignite virtually. So October 27th was a early release day, as you probably know from the calendar. What we did was we divided the afternoon after students headed home on buses or in cars with their families into three 45-minute breakout sessions, and this was all done virtually. There were 62 total sessions, which is amazing. Thank you so, so much to our staff that created those and delivered them. Eight presenters, many of whom Curtis recognized earlier this evening, and 577 participants, which those participants, you might be like, oh, that's not all of our staff. It's all of our instructional core teachers, all core teachers, and instructional assistants. So presenters and sessions, how it works. Presenters are primarily instructional staff members, administrators, teacher leaders, librarians, instructional technology facilitators, specialists, and even many of our instructional assistants, too. Session topics range from small group instruction in secondary, so 612, to digital classroom organization and addressing executive functioning skills, as Mr. Price discussed earlier this evening. We also, this time around, were able to incorporate sessions from the Digital Teaching and Learning Team at NCDPI, Participate Learning. The Dare Education Foundation did two awesome sessions about how to write grants and then how to get those grants approved, so teachers could come in and workshop their grant with Barbara Davidson and Jessica Loza, which was really, really awesome, and I hope it increases grant submission. And also Explore Learning, which is a company we work with for Gizmo's Labs and many companies. As the Board likely knows, we get professional learning from these companies, and so we're able to incorporate that into the day, so we're not pulling teachers at other times. We can incorporate this all into the Ignite Day. So how it works. From doing this two years ago now, and we took a break during COVID because we needed to create a lot of needs-based PD, so how do you seesaw, how do you use Google Classroom, how to do a lot of things. So this time around, we released a menu via skedge.com, and staff chose their sessions. So this is just a video kind of showing you what it looks like. They can see who the presenters are, what topic they want to choose. They click and go and sign up, and then it emails them exactly what their session's going to be. They can go in to their email when it's the session start time at, let's say, 1:00 PM. They click on it, they open it, and they're in their virtual session, which is pretty We will do the same thing in person on February 18th, 2022, which we're really excited about. That will be at First Flight High School. It'll be an all-day event. It's our required workday. Parents or teachers will do the same thing, where they go in and choose their sessions, and we're super excited about that. One of the really great things about doing this all virtually is that we could record all the sessions. So everything, all 62 of those sessions were recorded, and then we're able to upload them into Kite Learning, and staff is very used to doing that due to the conditions caused by remote learning. They can go in, find, I need to learn about classwork, seesaw. I can go click and find what I need to learn. So if people didn't get to go live, they can now go into Kite. Well, they will be able to soon. Shout out to Ms. Holly King, our tech director, for helping get all those loaded and created and done, because that's 62 sessions, and that's a lot. Go Holly. That will all be in there, so if anyone misses anything, they're able to go into Kite and find it, which is just for our staff, and we have a really, we have a lot of sessions in there, including 68 from last school year, which is pretty awesome. Any questions? Mr. Tauber?
Yes. Does the staff pick their subject matter?
Yes, they pick it all. So sometimes, we might have a session that a staff member needs to attend. One of the biggest things, we all work together to create the schedule and menu. So let's say our teacher assistants in the Exceptional Children's Department, they need to learn something specific by a certain day. We'll have it where they have to go to one session, but then they get to choose their other two. We try to balance it as much as possible. Any blanket PD that everyone has to do, we don't do it on those days, because staff sees Ignite and they know choice. So that's what we want.
I have one question. What's the measurement tool for that? That once they've taken the class, how do you know that it's being successful?
So after each session, staff gives us feedback. So every session, we have staff, they go in and they take attendance, like you would do in a classroom. They do that the same way, and then they go in and give feedback. So over time, one of the things that we learned the first time that we did Ignite, we got feedback from staff, was we had some meetings during Ignite, and people were like, ah, I didn't want to go to that meeting. I wanted to be able to go choose my PD like some of my peers got to. So we removed that, and so now staff will only have one session they must go to, and the rest is choice. And we can do it all day. That's the whole day. So they really get to choose what to learn all day long.
Anybody else have questions? Looks great. It's exciting to see everybody still coming together and that we have so many teachers in our schools that can help other teachers. It's really great. Creates a great environment.
Doing it in person, we are very, very excited to do that on February 18th. Teachers have already asked, which food trucks are we going to have? Who's coming? What speakers are we going to have? Two years ago, we had students that actually did the keynote address, and we'll probably do that again. So coming soon. You all are invited, February 18th, First Flight High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next report of information. So we've started our Coffee with the Superintendent series, so we call it something a little different each year, but what this is, is I'm taking, along with Ms. Parker, a day to go into, spend a day at each school, typically in a conference or a meeting room, and then we invite staff who can schedule appointment times to come in. And our intent is to go in and get feedback from staff on what's working well in our schools, where our challenges lie, and how we can better support staff. And so we're a couple of schools in. We've been to First Flight High School and First Flight Elementary School, and we're scheduled to get into the eight other schools over the next three weeks. Staff see this as a very worthwhile venture. They appreciate the support, the FaceTime, and when we get to the December meeting, we'll have completed the series, and then I'll give the Boards some feedback on themes that we get from teachers and staff across the county. Okay. Next is the COVID-19 update. So the current dashboard that we update on a daily basis is as follows. With student cases, we have 17 active cases as of today. 33 students are in quarantine, and staff, in the staff category, we have four active cases and one staff member who's quarantined. Over the last four weeks since we met last on October 12th, the numbers have been somewhat in that range, typically between 20 and 45 during this period of time. Dr. Sheila Davies, the Public Health Director, could not be with us tonight. She's been a presenter on a webinar with UNC that she scheduled several weeks ago, and she actually, if I'd known public comments were going to go for two and a half hours, we probably could have asked her to come in afterwards, but we didn't know that upfront. She has provided an update, so a brief update for the Board on local Dare-related information. So the number of new cases of COVID-19 continues to decrease. However, as of 11/8 yesterday, Dare County unfortunately remains in a level of high transmission status, as indicated by the red color on the CDC's Level of Community Transmission map.
John?
Yes, sir.
In terms of the numbers of cases, if you know, do those numbers reflect the population of Dare County without the visitors, or does it include the visitors?
I believe it includes visitors. Sandy, do you know for sure? Okay.
In other words, I guess the point is, is that our population grows significantly with the influx of visitors to Dare County. And so my question is, is that, again, if you know, is she computing those numbers to put us in a various high-level? Is this my mic?
It's mine.
Oh.
So she's...
Trying to get here and look at me.
Do you understand the question, John?
Yes, I do. So I know she's presented both categories previously, when she's presented before the Board. If you let me get through the update, I might be able to answer some of your questions. So this past week, there were a total of 67 new COVID cases in Dare, and the percent of positive tests, the total test, was 9.13%. These numbers are down considerably from this time last month, when there was a total of 119 new COVID-19 cases, and the percent of positive tests, the total test, was 16.97 for the weekend in October 10th. As of October 8th, there are 51 active resident cases, so there's the answer, resident cases. Sure. As of yesterday, there are 51 active resident cases of COVID-19 and three residents who are currently hospitalized. And in talking with Dr. Davies about the formula that could take Dare down into a lower transmission status, the ballpark of that 51 needs to get down into the 17 or 18 range in order to move to the next level down in the CDC transmission status category. Further, so a question that I fielded from a couple of Board members is, how do you figure out the transmission formula? Okay. So there's two different indicators. First is the new cases per 100,000 people in the last seven days. Okay, so in Dare County, we have about 37,000 residents, permanent residents. The math would be adjusted. And in that category, the raw number of new cases out of that seven-day period. Okay? So that...
So that gives you either low, moderate, substantial, or high status. Dare is currently still in the high category based upon that factor. The good news, go ahead.
Say that again. New cases per 100,000.
Sure. New cases per 100,000 persons in the past seven days, and then you do the math based upon the number of residents in Dare County.
So they're only counting residents in that part?
Yes.
But they're not, see, then why, are they counting residents? Are they counting non-residents in the other part?
So-
And we have none, I know.
If, if the Public Health Director was here to answer Public Health Director-related questions, we might be a little better informed.
That's a great point, by the way.
Yeah, thank you.
And that's, that's not a shot. It's Sheila Davies. I'm the school superintendent, and I'm not the Public Health Director.
Correct.
I'm trying to present her report.
John, let me ask you a question. You talked, the third, we have currently 33 students in quarantine?
Uh, yes, yes, sir.
Okay. And, and how did those incidences occur, if you know?
Well, it's all situation-specific. Ms. Kinsel, if you want to give a summary of-
I mean, is there, is there a cluster, some, certain elements that are clusters?
Just want to make sure I'm not going to blow everybody out. There it comes again. Good evening. The quarantines that we're currently seeing are happening during lunch exposures, when students are unmasked, obviously, to be able to eat. We have had a couple of recent cases that are pre-case classrooms, don't always have the number of, we have a lot of students in there that either have a mask exemption or they have, they are not of age where they're required to wear them in school. So there's, there's a lot of things that happen in pre-case classes, if you can imagine, with the masks being worn properly and consistently. And so we've had a few that have higher numbers just most recently. But no, there's no pockets yet.
Sandy, are they trying to make sure the kids in the cafeteria are sitting far enough apart?
Absolutely, as much as we possibly can. They are spreading out, taking turns, using larger spaces. Principals have been very diligent with that. And again, we are eating in our classrooms for the most part, so when possible, they take the classroom, the meals are coming to the classroom, and then we will spread out.
Well, as we've talked about previously, that only goes so far, because there's so many kids you can fit in a cafeteria. So back to the indicators, the other measure is the percent, percentage of positive tests during the past seven days. And that is when you take the number of positive tests versus the overall number of tests that have been taken. Okay? So those are the two indicators. The good news in Dare County's case is that, under that measure, the county has fallen into moderate status. In the other measure, it's still high. And when the CDC comes up with these formulas and designating districts in that transmission status, they take the higher number. So we're on the right path countywide. We're just not there yet to get out of the red transmission status. And if you look at the map that the CDC produces across the state, it looks ballpark, don't quote me exact number, but it looks like about half of the districts across the state have moved from high to substantial, or a couple are moderate. So trending, the trends are becoming better, but we're still not where we need to be as far as getting out of the red. Related to this, as of Friday, the North Carolina School Board Association tracks the number of districts that are still mandating masks. And as of this past Friday, 93 districts are still, still have a mask mandate. And lastly, and from Dr. Davies, she is available to come to the December meeting. Yes. Next is the, so the Dare Education Foundation has created an Affordable Housing Task Force. Mr. Woody, Mr. Hester, and Ms. Lawler have joined me on this, and we're coming with three or four DEF representatives. And so for those that don't know, DEF's mission is, and purpose is to raise funds to support Dare County Schools programs, including supporting teacher housing. And we've had, since 2008, 24 units in, in Run Hill Ridge, and since 2011, we've, we've had 12 teacher housing units in Buckston. The mortgages were consolidated a few years back, and Hatters Housing is now fully paid off. The units themselves are typically about 1,100 square feet, or are 1,100 square feet, two bedrooms, two baths. And the current rent rate of the rent is $850 a month, which is very affordable, obviously, in Dare County. The project's been a huge success, and originally DEF on both loans worked with State Employees' Credit Union and had 0% mortgages. So we've had a lot of informal discussion over the last year or so, and then certainly discussion with members of the Housing Task Force to talk about expanding opportunities. And I think that the task force would agree, and probably most of you would agree, we'd love to have teacher housing on Roanoke Island as an option. So that is the goal. What comes with that is we have to have property or be gifted property so that DEF could pursue some kind of a teacher housing unit here in Roanoke Island. And currently, we don't have that. So the task force has been interested in trying to still find a way to expand the number of opportunities for teachers. And so this task force has considered a DEF proposal to expand Run Hill Ridge and the 24 units by eight. And there is enough land there, and was actually when the original 24 units were, were built. So that's been a discussion that's been ongoing, and members of the Dare Education Foundation have met with Town Bank, who is very interested in a 0% mortgage. The estimate at this point, again, rough, and who knows what construction costs or where they're going these days, would be about a $2 million, $2 million cost to DEF, which the organization is highly confident in taking on that loan and expanding teacher housing units for Dare County Schools teachers. So a rough analysis is, would be to build eight units, 1,100 square feet, similar model, and then the funding would be, the financing would be somewhere around $2 million. DEF, I would, what I would propose, if the board was interested, would be to have DEF come to the December meeting. The, the committee's going to meet again. I think we've got a meeting in 10 days or so. And what I would propose is that if the board wanted to take a step further, is to have members of DEF present in December and, with more specific information, if this is something the board wants to consider. The, one issue that DEF has considered, I believe Mr. Woody brought it up, was the concept of maybe trying to find a way, with the land that we have behind Manio Middle School, is there some way that we could consider some kind of a project out there? And, and looking, talking to our facilities director, it isn't zoned for housing, it is annexed, and there's, there would be a lot of draining and space considerations out there. So I know that was with brainstorming and trying to come up with ideas. I didn't, I had met with Commissioner Woodard and talked a little bit in trying to see if there was something on the horizon that the, the commissioners could consider for land for the school board and DEF in the future. And there's, you know, they're, they're working on several projects and looking at housing, as everyone is aware, in a community in high need. Nothing on the horizon for the school board to consider as far as a gift. There also is a possibility, in talking to Mr. Schwartz, that the board could consider trying to solicit members of the community who might consider offering property to the school district, or the commissioners in the county, who would then gift it to the school board. So Ms. Lawler, Carl, Frank, anything else that you want to add to the discussion? I'm served on the committee.
I just don't want people to think we're not going to give up on Roanoke Island. We're looking very hard for property there. Boards of education cannot buy land, so it has to be gifted. So we, Roanoke Island is our first priority.
We do have high demand, just so you know. Typically, we have a waiting list on a year-round basis, anywhere between 12 and 16. And honestly, if there were more opportunities, a lot of our staff members know they're few and far between, and there's a lot of competition for those units. I feel sure that we could easily fill up eight units at Run Hill Ridge and still expand in the Manio. So love to hear some feedback on the board, if you'd like to have DEF do a presentation in, in December.
Richard, I have a question. Is it, is that statement that Margaret made accurate in terms of the board not being able to purchase property?
We have to purchase property for public school purposes. It'd be a lot cleaner if the foundation were to purchase the property.
Say that again?
It'd be a lot cleaner if the foundation were to purchase the property, or the property were to be gifted to the board or to the, or to the foundation. We could accept the gift of property.
Rich, could we, could we trade property?
We could trade property, yes. Yep.
Moving on, next, parental inspection and objections to instructional materials. If you pull up the presentation, Keith. So Dare County Schools does have a policy if members of the community have concerns with instructional materials. And so what are we talking about? We're talking about possibility of books and articles, digital content, guest speakers, videos. And by the way, I want to thank Holly King, who's our Director of Technology. Stealing your presentation, Holly, well done. She's done fabulous work in getting together M-Tech standards and community committees. We'll talk a little bit about that. So the Board of Education has a policy if you want to challenge content in materials and books in the school district. It's policy 3210. And it has, and you obviously can't read that based upon this presentation, but we have a process where if someone wants to challenge curriculum, the first step is to, it's okay, you won't be able to read it, I'll just give you the highlights. And if you can read it, God bless you, and your glasses are better than mine. So the first step is if there's a complaint, then a parent can go to the principal. Principal then has the responsibility of explaining how and why the material is being used. If the parent is not satisfied with that response, then they can fill out what we call a request for reconsideration of works. And we have a form for that that can be filled out, and then it goes through a review committee process. So the Director of Technology, who supervises librarians, our librarians are tasked with all the purchasing of materials in our media centers. She is made aware, and then she works in consult, consulting the librarian, instructional technology facilitator that we have in each school to get the committee process going. So the committee is made up of the librarian, instructional technology facilitator, which, by the way, most school districts across the state of North Carolina do not have one in every school, so we're very thankful for that. The principal's involved, a teacher, and then we ask for a parent. And so then Ms. King working with the librarian and the, and the ITF, then come up with a review pack of the materials, all the information. And then the committee decides whether, there should be a reconsideration of the request. And then we have a formal process where the parent is notified of the feedback and the decision of the committee. In the case where the parent may not be satisfied with the findings of the committee, then they can appeal to the superintendent. And then the superintendent has a district-wide committee, kind of a similar process, review the request, review the concerns, review the content, and then, again, formally address it with the parent. And then if the parent is not satisfied with the superintendent's response, then they can appeal to the board. So it's a very detailed process. This is a policy that we've had in place for some time now, and I know that we've had some requests, particularly around books. And I think it's important to know that the district does have a policy and a very comprehensive set of action steps that can be taken. So if you have any, take any questions.
It, it appears that I think this process came to fruition, I think, recently, did it not? With an examination of some literature in the school or not?
So we've had a couple of contacts who have wanted to challenge some material, but not gone through the formal process. And we have had the process in place for some time. It's not been something that has been activated in quite some time, or at least since I've been here. But we do have a very formal process, and I think it's important to know that parents have a right to inspect instructional materials. And if there are concerns, then we're here to review those concerns, those considerations, listen, and then consider, you know, whatever the request may be, or whatever the reconsideration could be. Sure. Okay.
Joe, it says it was, it was adopted originally in 1997, and it was revised in 2020, April of 2020.
We, we've had contact, so we're trying to redirect, here's the policy, and we believe in following policy and due process. Yep.
Next, we have unfinished business, which we don't have any. So next up, we have new business, Sandy Kinsel. And it's a review of the policy 4231, 5021, 7263.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Farley. Under this particular policy, Session Law 2021-130 requires that all public school units or boards of education adopt a policy regarding the use of face coverings by employees, students, and visitors, which the board did for the first time last month. The school board now is required to vote at least once per month on whether the face covering policy should be modified. So being presented to you this evening for modification consideration is the policy
Sandy has a point of clarification. This satisfies the state requirement. So how we vote on this, if we vote nay on this face coverings, are we basically saying this is parental choices, that number two on this agenda? I'm, I'm quite confused, because we have, number two says, Madam Chair, remove that we make the following modifications to the-
So-
So-
Mr. Tauber, what we're asking the board is, by statute, you have the opportunity to make modifications to the existing policy. So the existing policy you adopted can be modified in any way that the board decides and then votes by the majority to be able to make changes. If the board were to decide to make masks optional, it's the same policy. We would modify the policy as directed, and it would still remain intact with modifications.
There was a little confusion last meeting in terms of what we were, we were doing, so I just wanted to clarify that.
If, if I may, I think I can help clarify that. At the last meeting, the vote was on adopting the specific policy. What you're required to do now, going forward, is at least monthly vote on whether to modify the existing policy. So what I've been suggesting to boards is, you first take a vote on whether to modify the existing policy. And if the vote is no on that, then that ends the discussion. If the vote is yes on that, then you have to determine how you're going to modify the existing policy. So the, the recommendation that was in attachment number three when it first came out, I would suggest changing that. And I talked with Dr. Farley about that, so that the recommendation would be, the superintendent, I believe the superintendent's recommendation is to make no modification to the existing policy.
Correct.
Okay.
Do we have any further, any discussion?
On the motion to modify or not to modify?
Yes.
Is that correct?
All right. Madam Chair-
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we not make any modifications to policy 4231, 5021, 7263.
I have a motion by Ms. Lawler.
A second.
Second by Ms. Bothwell. Any further discussion? All in favor of not modifying the policy, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Opposed, no.
Okay, motion carries.
Six to two.
Six to two, or five to two.
Mr. Woody, Mr. Tauber.
Joe and Carl. Okay, next we have Dr. Farley, this is Attachment Four.
Right, so-
Great, so that's-
Next is a regulation that is related to the face covering policy. So it's Regulation 4231-5021-7263-R. This regulation, since the board has voted not to modify the policy, is relevant in that we are starting, started the winter sports season. And so the intent of the regulation is to recognize in indoor sports, particularly in high-intensity sports such as wrestling and basketball, that there should be a consideration for not having to wear a mask while engaged in competition. Okay? The CDC recognizes that there are specific instances when wearing a mask may not be feasible in references high-intensity indoor sports, such as basketball and wrestling. Our athletic directors, our principals, our assistant principals, and our coaches are in favor of allowing during competition, during a basketball game on a wrestling mat, that athletes not be required to wear a face mask during competition, but once they come off the court or once they come off of the mat, that they wear face covering. Also getting feedback, our coaches and athletic directors have advocated for indoor track and for cheerleaders to also be included in this regulation. So I would recommend a modification to add indoor track and cheerleading along with wrestling and basketball solely for this winter season due to the conditions that we're dealing with the pandemic. Also a part of this regulation, and keep in mind, the superintendent via board policy can adopt regulations without board approval, but as you know, it's been my practice since I've been superintendent never to create a regulation that did not come before the board. So I just think that's good practice and procedure. Also attached to this is expectations that once, again, once an athlete leaves the court or a mat, they are masked, coaches, sports staff, officials, visitors, spectators are still wearing a face covering at all time unless the board decides to modify 4231-5021-7263-R. And we are also emphasizing in this regulation that our athletic directors are communicating with our opponents so that when they come to Dare County, they know what the expectations are for student, athletes, coaches, trainers, and spectators. Looking for a approval of the regulation.
Madam Chair, I move we approve Regulation Code 4231/5021/7263-R as presented.
Motion by Mr. Tauber.
A second.
A second by Mr. Twitty.
Mr.-
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, you're going to add, add to the categories as presented, indoor track and cheerleading?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And you're also going to have an exemption for showering, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, Ms., thank you.
All that and more.
So the second to last bullet point, all individuals are required to wear masks in locker rooms and on buses at all times. Mr. Schwartz has recommended that we add unless showering.
Yeah.
I'll amend my motion to include the shower.
And the cheerleading and the track.
Indoor track.
Okay.
And cheerleading.
I said that.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
And that's all for this evening. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I move we adjourn.
No, we don't have any new business. New business is before.
Do you want to stay longer?
New business is before. Old business.
Oh, it is?
Mm-hmm.
Talk right.
Yeah, I just said. Unfinished business.
We've been here a long time.
We have unfinished business, then we have new business. Okay.
Then we have monkey business.
A second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Lawler, a second by Mr. Twitty, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.